So everyone knows this meeting is being recorded. If you could please stand and join me for the flag.
To the flag, we have a state and to the Republic of Kansas. One issue on indivisible with liberty and the husband.
So we have a number of big things on the agenda this evening. So we do have a public hearing that is scheduled for six thirty-five, which we will start right at six thirty-five. We won't start that early. And then we have a number of budget presentations, which will follow shortly thereafter. So we have, we may take a few things out of order. So to try to fill in the space in between sort of now and six thirty-five, just so people know. But so I do, so I believe, you know, we don't have any remote participation for the select board. We're all here in person. So we're going to move on to item two, which is community announcements and events. And I want, it was brought to our attention that Friday is Employee Appreciation Day. So I want to thank our Human Resources Director for alerting us to this. It gave us the opportunity to let our employees know how deeply we appreciate them, all of them. We have around sixty employees of the town across many different departments. And we would be completely lost without them. So we, so as an expression of gratitude, the Human Resources Department is offering a, a little coffee, yeah, grab and go breakfast on Monday. So employees should be getting an email about that if you have not already. But anyhow, but I hope that the whole town will join us in expressing thanks to our amazing town employees.
Absolutely.
And those board, board members, if you have anything to add about that?
I'll be here to greet on Monday.
Fantastic. Cool. All right, great. I hopefully will be able to as well.
Oh, right. No, it won't be. Mike just reminded me, you're not in town on Monday.
Why? Because I was about to say that I will be too, and then I go, wait a minute.
So now I'm going to reply and say sorry.
Well, why did we want to waste time?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, so then other community announcements and events. So the Mendon Cultural Council is planning to have a townwide scavenger hunt on May seventeenth. Jeremy, were you able to connect with your colleagues?
Yes, we're not during tonight. We have, we have a packed agenda with both budget and stuff tonight. So our next regular meeting, cultural council will join and kind of explain what the townwide scavenger hunt is going to be. It's going to involve some town property involvement. So that's why I select board, I will take a vote on allowing and using it or not. But we wanted to make sure we announced it last year tonight, May seventeenth.
And I, yeah, the Cultural Council hosted that scarecrow event in the fall, which was a great way to engage a lot of community members. It was a lot of fun to see. So I'm, I'm excited to hear about what, what they have planned. I know, I believe they're working with the historic commission as well. So we'll hear about that more next week. So okay, six thirty-four. I think we are getting close enough that we could invite up the land use committee representative. So Anne Mazar, if you could join us, please.
Hello.
Wait, you'll wait to start the hearing until six thirty-five?
Sure.
But you're, please feel free to introduce yourself.
Anne Mazar, Chair of the Land Use Committee and.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah.
We don't have bold music for this moment. It was probably exactly.
Exactly one minute. Fit another agenda item in there. So. So six thirty. So, so yes, so I will be looking for.
I moved to open the public hearing for the five-year land use program.
Second.
Discussion. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Both of them, thank you. Oh, no, that wasn't.
Nice, nice try.
Thank you.
So yeah, could you tell us a little bit about this, please?
Yeah, it says, part of the land use community bylaws, NCPA bylaws have a public hearing. So people can have comments or suggest ideas for programs. I could read the five goals for the five-year land use. I would be wondering. To improve access to open spaces and recreational resources. Expand the amount of and improve the condition of passive and active recreation opportunities. Protect the natural resources in Mendon, including forest, arid lands, water resources from all habitat. Promote deserved Mendon sense of community. And to help guide business and residential development to shape Mendon's growth, avoiding hazardous development. Following the recommendations in the master plan and the Mendon housing production plan. And I think we also need to add on here, the open space recreation. We can talk about that.
Great, thank you. You have a lot of plans to guide us well. And any questions for Anne from the board?
I would ask your thoughts on the Recreation Field Committee and its mission since it's related and we're here and we talk about it.
I think Dan has reached out to all the creation boards and asking what their needs are. Because I don't think the committee really came together.
I think it's. Yeah, it's coming, yes. Yeah.
I know. So he's, you know, he called that on the mission. And also, one of the requests from CPA is to do field work on fields of the high school jointly with Pupden. And so that would possibly open up some more fields, but.
Okay.
Can you remind us how often we have these hearings? Are these, is this an annual hearing for the, the land use goals?
Yeah, this is an annual hearing, but we have meetings, latest committee and a community preservation committee, testing everyone. And they're open and anybody can come and give ideas or comments. So it's really be around.
And I think also we, we file some documents with the state and what is that every five years or every seven years? I know, I feel like there was one that was five and one that was seven.
Yeah, they always say some recreation plans over seven years, and we just filed, so that's.
Okay. Thank you. And are there any questions from the audience and anyone in the room or online? Right, I don't hear any. So I think that we, I guess we, if there isn't anything else, we'll close the hearing and then we can vote on this. Okay, so.
I move to close the public hearing for the five-year land use program.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, and so then we'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the five-year land use program as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you for bringing this to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The, we have a land use program. Thank you for.
Thanks, Anne, for all your work.
So I'd like to invite the Finance Committee to join us. I've got to see Mike Greger is here. I believe other Finance Committee members are also listening to. Is there anyone online?
Yeah, we've got Billy and Nick, I believe I saw online.
Yes, I'm online.
So whatever. So this is a, going to be a joint meeting with the Finance Committee?
Billy, just in the room, we've got me, Jack and Jesse, our record keeping. All right, so call board the Finance Committee meeting at six forty.
Jesse, do you want to maybe give some space? Because you have people towards coming up to speak to us.
Yeah, we see. We have a remote, she has a space.
Yes, I think actually we did say their names. You say the name, doesn't pose a challenge.
Yeah, we've got Nick, Billy and Ron. So we're not doing, well, I don't think we're voting today, but if we do, we'll vote by vote.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Right, so Jeremy, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, so thanks everyone. Thanks for having me to join us again. Tonight we've got three budget presentation. We've got the Board of Health, which includes trash disposal, waste disposal. And we have maximum value regional technical. We all have more circulated digital copies of the budget. And then we've had some paper copies here. I've got a number. One. And then then we have police as the third final. And then we go to those ideas. So Jack and Polly, George Billmore, Alan Greger.
It's going to be as well.
Not really.
That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jack Paul. I am the Board of Health Administrator. And right now I have handed out our Board of Health proposed budget for this year twenty-six. For our end page budget snapshot, I just wanted to do a, write down our highlight of anything that has been changed for this year twenty-five to twenty-six. So do you want to point out salaries and wages? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, again, if you want for Board of Health.
We posted the meeting for you tonight because you have a forum here.
That's right. All right, so we're going to call it Board of Health meeting on March fifth. Everyone, all our members again, right, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, George Billmore.
Tom Caretire here, Alan Greenberg, Jack Paul.
Thank you.
So any differential from this year twenty-five and this year twenty-six is going to be salaries and wages. We have only up three percent for the cost of living adjustments for our salaries. For testing, lake and landfill, we have only up two percent. And that's due for the lake testing, the microback, we have only on. By a lot of that we received beginning of the year. And again, for the waste collection, garbage. The subscribe trash disposal and hazardous waste. The treasures, the trash disposal subscriber going up three percent. The subscriber municipal trash collection one percent. So total of this collection, what varies, one percent.
So just some context on four thirty. So when we say four thirty, we mean that slice of the general ledger, which is the department of, the Department for Waste Collection. Within that department, we then have two separate funds. So we're talking about the general fund here, which is one thousand four thirty. You can see here. This column E is last year highlighted. Last year was when the subscriber trash program was on the general fund. And now that we move here to F Y twenty-six, the two things that are, that are on the general fund are that nineteen thousand five fifty for trash disposal and ten thousand for collection. So those are the only two. See that annual hazard waste. Municipal trash. The municipal trash, if you recall, this is trash for this building of municipal buildings that should not be borne by the rate payer, because the rate payer is a subset of the taxpayer. So taxpayers should be paying for municipal trash, not just, not just. So then we talked about two thousand dash four thirty, which is the, which is the enterprise fund for trash. And that's all the other costs you see in the period down here. And as we talked about when we were looking at the local receipts budget. These expenses came off of the general fund and are going into the enterprise fund. And the associated revenue is also going up of the general fund into the enterprise fund. So that's why we have to control for those, for those revenues when we're doing here over the year. So it's not that the budget saves, you know, six hundred thirty thousand dollars to reflect because the, the revenue goes well. And I'm sure this point was, was covered many times, but I was here when we did it, that, you know, this isolates, you know, revenues and expenditures for the trash program. And then any surpluses generated within the program. And then we return to rate payers, you know. I don't want to say rate increases, a smaller rate increase in the avenues. And it keeps it, keeps it segregated. That's the one that changed. And I will say as well, the same thing, sorry, Jack. Keep talking. This, this sixty-nine five twenty-five. A lot of, I've done a lot of salary work with Human Resources to make sure that we dial this number in for fifty-two weeks for, for any health insurance, opt-outs, for any longevity payments. So it's not that department heads missed something here, it's that there's information that they didn't have. So the ultimate, what I've come with to you as a recommended, that we can, that we can walk through. There will be different salary numbers, most very fractional, but they'll be.
So question, so for this subscriber cost that are due to the budget. Trying to understand how that differs from pulling from what subscriber, it's only from the enterprise fund subscribers pay. So what, what do we need to budget here? What are we, what expenses would be budgeting here that aren't taken care of by the enterprise?
Just municipal related. So.
So subscriber trash disposal, A G.
So the panel will be responsible for annual hazardous waste state of ten thousand. Municipal trash collection of eighteen thousand seven hundred, you know, for this year twenty-five.
Yeah, so, so the first line is subscriber trash disposal.
Yeah.
That's in the enterprise. That's in the enterprise fund, okay. All right, so subscriber trash disposal, trash collection. All of those are budgeted expenses that will be paid for out of the enterprise.
Correct.
And we have to, okay, we budget them to put them in the budget.
It's going to act, it's going to act like water has for years now, right? I mean, those people that get pound water are paying in and taking out and sort of separated from the general operating fund.
Yep.
So the annual town media warrant will have a appropriate vote for the enterprise fund. Enterprise fund was created by.
Yeah.
So there will just be one race appropriate vote for the enterprise fund. And then that money will not be in the general fund.
Yeah, we budget to pay for it and then the enterprise fund back does it.
Yeah, we create the budget and then they collect the money throughout the year. And it's up to the treasurer, treasurer to make sure that there's.
Paying bills.
Money to cash the checks, the money behind the checks to cash.
You don't mind clarifying with the municipal trash collection, that would be then out of that enterprise fund as well as at work?
The municipal, so the subscriber municipal subscriber is in the enterprise fund for subscriber raise. And then the municipal is on the general, because it's just a, it's no different than our internet.
Okay, so it's, but, but what's listed under waste collection will be?
Subscriber. The subscriber is now subscribed to the general fund and the annual hazardous waste and municipal draft are in the general.
Okay.
So all taxpayers are responsible for upkeep of municipal properties and the trash collection done here at Town Hall. So all, they all pay for that. But everybody's personal trash pickup is subscriber. And that's segregated now. So another level rolled free cash if we under or over and any positive or negative to a subscriber is benefited or allocated back to subscribers.
It's more, and we have a really close, it's going to take a while for us to see a noticeable difference in the subscriber annual increase.
Yeah. It felt like the driver for this a year ago was more about when you realize all the municipal trash was being picked up by a subset of taxpayers because they were rate payers.
Yeah.
So we kind of.
Because I was a rate payer, I was confused.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you said it for.
That felt like the drivers to kind of segregate the money so that it's.
But there were, there were some monies that come back.
Right.
From the Alhavie, like, you know, six thousand dollars back towards hazardous waste state, which is written into our contract. So when that would come back, if I understand it correctly, that would go back into the general fund, not into the enterprise trash, because of how the hazardous waste state is funded.
Yep.
Because it's funded by the town, it's open to everyone in town. So it's a matter of making sure everything goes out and comes back, goes into the.
Right place, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll say this is the third community I've been in that's had, that while I was there, solved the problem of rate payers paying for me to stretch. So it's a pretty common thing.
So this is the year that that's going to get squared away. So thank you, thank you for, yeah, I know you brought this up at least two years ago. So, but it's important to do it right. And it sounds like this is the year we can do it right, so, thank you.
Can I ask about the V N A line? For your, for the promotion of the flu clinics, health services. I just, I'm just curious, well, curious that it didn't go up, like, the, the healthcare costs are the same. And that's, so that's just, that's a question. The second, just looking on insights of, I mean, I've used the service. I think it's a great service, like, are we, are you getting the, the usage of that that you desire? Do you need more clinics? Do you need more space? Like, is that something that you?
Last year, we actually saw a slight decrease in the amount of people that showed for the flu clinics.
For the flu clinic.
We have had a, a call or request from the senior staff to do more blood pressure clinics.
Okay.
So that's something that Tom is working on with Amy. And Jack has been in contact with V N A, trying to figure out, you know, what the cost would be and what the added benefit would be.
Is that more regular checks of people's?
Yeah, right after, once a month.
Okay.
So it would either be every two weeks, you know, we add.
These are seniors who aren't making their way to their doctor to get that check.
Yeah, and there's some questions that we're going back and forth with, you know, the V N A and trying to, you know, that's their area of expertise. At this particular point, they're not sure that we're going to get any added benefit. So there are other things that we're looking into. I believe calling a health inspector. Was, you know, reaching out to someone in the area that was a registered nurse, I believe, to see if there was another way of providing that extra service without using the V N A. A long time, the V N A was down in the two or three thousand dollar a year.
Okay.
And of course, with twenty twenty.
Right.
Going on, things got really crazy.
So it's more than just flu shots. You're, you're doing various different types of services out of that.
It was explained to us at one point, I remember Tom from seven or eight years ago saying, what are we buying? And the V N A came back with buying insurance costs. You can't really pinpoint every service and break it down into what they charge us on a annual basis. Because of the way things are, it was explained to us that if there was a T B outbreak, they're there.
So these are more like our nurses on retainer for the town?
Right. Sometimes have a town nurse, we don't have that.
Okay.
So this is a service that we buy and it's very hard sometimes. Again, Tom, seven or eight years ago questioned, what are we paying for? And it's very hard to pinpoint every dollar.
Right.
Because again, it's.
Depending on what's happening.
It's insurance balls. If you don't use it, you still have to pay. That may sound like the accounting guy. You know, COVID was kind of an exception. I think because they were government funds made available. We paid premiums above and beyond the contract. Hopefully, nothing like that will ever happen again. And, you know, if it was an outbreak that we swine flu, things like that, our agreement with them will cover.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So the additional vaccines come with the service. But next year, we'll probably see an increase in rates, we have all insurance policies, whatever.
They've been pretty consistent, Jack, how long have they been at this number?
Well, I've been here three years, so they've been the same for three years. And you reach out to them at the end of the calendar year. Some people, that's like, they have more budget season. Every year they save up and then the rate is.
Okay.
Well, there's benefits both ways.
Right.
As a customer, either.
Yep.
So, you know, if, if you can hold the number and they're not expanding more than that.
Yeah, I, I was thinking it would, I didn't realize that it was more of a paid-in system. I was thinking like if we were purchasing seventy-five hundred dollars worth of vaccines and nurses every year, it would seem that it should go up, but we're not. It's, it's more about responding to the health needs throughout the year. And it's, this is your policy for doing that. And that makes plenty of sense, so.
Well, I don't know what the, what's about me and you need to have someone.
Right.
So we have to have someone.
Right.
This is the best alternative for us.
Okay.
And, and Levine is, is great, she's very responsive. You know, if, if we lost her, it would be, she's great.
Okay.
Um, you go about this subject or something?
Different subject, same. You go first.
All right, I had a question about the, the rate test that going up five percent. I was wondering, in the letter that they provided in the back, it said if we're under contractual obligations, we'll continue to provide. I was wondering if we have a contract with them or have any plans to negotiate.
We've got it.
No, I think it's a good idea though.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're never going to stop testing the lake, the landfill and our town wells, right? So.
We do vote.
The landfill eventually.
To your deduction, the capacity E P, are we going to have to come testing?
Because our rates are going down?
Well, because the information of getting back under testing levels is very, very good.
Good.
So we're open to that E P will, assessment will make the determination for some of the testing that's been going on for so many years. And you reduce. By eliminating, which will help that cost factor, that testing component.
My question actually has to do with testing as well. Could you outline three areas of testing? And go into detail on lake and landfill, but well testing is not really covered in here. So is that something that your board is responsible for, is public water testing and?
It's kind of, it's kind of like my typical, my typical business budget, so I just left it, everything the same as in. The well and the budget is for the landfill wells.
Okay.
Soil and gas and water management wells of the landfill.
So looking ahead, you think about P F A S and the testing that's going to be required in the next two to three years. Would that be something that would fall into your purview or?
Or water?
Well, and do we have, would it be water or would, should we look at a plan around that?
Yes, we would plan on that, but this station is that. I just, it depends on, depends on the ultimate. You search the water, can't find a public water supply. Here, yeah. But the water events, if something's associated with, will be a future water, are there to be a water expense? So basically, it just depends.
Because I'm pretty sure the public water supplies here in town, first the library and the Town Hall campus and, and the beach. Each one of them handles the, the costs associated with that individually. It doesn't come out of the Board of Health budget, right?
Yeah, I just think with the manned mandated testing that's coming our way in a couple of years, we should really look at consolidating that across the town to say, is there a economies of scale and trying to take it out to departments and sort of look at it more holistically.
Especially if you're negotiating a contract.
Right, yes. And I saw well testing, so I immediately said, hey, Tom, do you want to do that?
And, yeah.
Well, that's actually from the P F A S. Well, that's actually from the P F A side, you probably do need to kind of understand or start to educate people what that means. Because they talk about private wells, but they only focus on public water supplies.
Yeah, it's interesting whether we're up for that.
You've been led to believe, I don't, I don't know who other than words, that you can't use municipal money. Pay for private well testing.
To me, it's more about providing resources to individuals that aren't up on what they need to do. With information and or.
Right.
Set established programs to make sure they.
Jack does, does do that. If someone were to call and ask Jack if they were having some problems with their well.
Mm hmm.
First thing that Jack says is you need to have a state certified lab.
Yeah.
And I think, I, I don't know for sure, but I think that's one of the reasons we've kind of stuck with microbech, even though they've physically moved their office on us. They've gotten a little further away. I think at one time they were pushed up.
It was obvious.
So the response time, especially when it came to the lake.
Mm hmm.
Was great. Um, is, again, it has to be a state certified lab and I don't know how, um, this area, state certified labs are.
And the testing requirements may change at the federal level. So we don't even know what it's going to be, but what's been stated, it's pretty, pretty strict. So, yeah.
I think that it's important that people should know that they should be testing their well privately.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've had mine tested every three years. Um.
You guys sent out a like email last recently, right? Something recommending that people do that.
I was like, that's just a critical three drug.
Yeah.
And I also included a link to what you should be testing for your private wells.
Right.
To make sure with the drug doesn't affect your drinking water. I try to keep everything.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And just with the discussion of private wells, as an F Y I, the board's currently, uh, evaluating its private well regulations. We're going to be making some additions and qualifications towards currently out there. And they're coming through different things that are coming out in discussions.
For when houses change ownership, when new wells get drilled, that kind of thing.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we've actually even gone one step further. Um, we've actually decided that we're going to have within our regulations because they're almost ready, uh, to be improved. They're almost done. It's probably been two years we've been working on them. Uh, whenever our town engineer is available, but.
Yeah, we know how that goes.
We're considering, uh, the A D U's.
Okay.
That are coming online. So we'll, no determination from the state has actually come out yet, but we're going to have a placeholder.
Okay.
Uh.
For like volume and whatnot or?
Just distance.
Okay.
You know, it could be anything, distance to someone's septic system, distance to a neighbor. Um, but we, we need to have a spot so that when the state comes up with clearer, uh, parameters.
Yeah, you could just.
You can insert something within the regulations. Uh, Tom also has an interest, um, with blasting regulations and how that may affect, uh, people's wells. We've had people come before us with some concerns. So that's going to be another, essentially a placeholder within the regulations that we're going to, uh, certify soon. So that again, when blasting regulations come about, that's something else that we can insert.
All right.
The land and maintenance getting rougher and rougher, we're probably going to see blasting that we're not used to. So even though someone may say from an engineering standpoint, it's not a, a large event. Plus it's a large event because it's not what we used to see it.
Okay.
So these are things that we're trying to get ahead of.
You mean rougher, like people are exploring more difficult to build locations?
That's all that's left.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's good. Just a question on, on the, uh, on the reading here. Pretty, pretty significant here, nine eighty that prompted the closure. Did you get root cause or causes on that?
What page do you?
I'm sorry, the, H six. Water testing results.
It's a page. Yeah, I'll ask that question. Yeah, similar for the question. Sorry.
Did, did, would you have a, a, a root cause for the, for the, the reading that was on the front of the closure? See here, you know, August thirteenth, it was exceeding limit for E coli. And that reading, the result was nine eighty, which is, you know, ten X over what you ordinarily expect. I just wondered what the root causes were for high reading then. Was that an anomaly? Was that an error?
I believe that was anomaly because even I questioned that. I was like, very surprised that was that high, a number of triple digit number. Uh, that's what Dan Byer does, uh, well, collect, not well collection, one collection for the league for us. And he even says he believes the anomaly, but we had to close down because of the high.
Got it. Cause then two days later, it's.
Exactly.
It's.
Exactly.
Inexplicably disappears.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that does happen occasionally. Uh, and that's the reason for.
Right, thank you.
There are a lot of variables, you know, to affect the, uh, testing when it might be high. External uses of fertilizer and sometimes external rain, storm work. I can probably read behind one day, but next day. Right down.
Thank you.
In the subscriber trash collection, we can be donation to thirty year rolling up this per review year. Okay. Uh, it's only to be bought, it's, that's a value add to be bought into the contract, I would write.
Yeah, so that's, that's for for the house use for.
Uh, it could be for anyone in a lot. All right. If we have a dumpster available, we have a new that we can use the dumpster. Uh, we use a dumpster, thirty nine dumpster, hazardous waste day.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're very good that way, but those are things that, um, before I even came on the board, I'm so long myself that were, uh, written into the contract along with, uh, some scholarship money.
Yeah.
Just to try to get value added for a dollar.
Great.
And they're very good. Just wants, we never have any, any questions or issues when we call them up.
Uh, and then the other part, I think, uh, by God, you made the joke about, you know, how your lead depends on the order. So we've got twenty three dollars of office supply.
That was tonight. That was a different.
Right. We've got the office supplies lying out here. Uh, is that something we are, I thought we were looking to consolidate some of those things? Um, is that for future budget considerations, just consolidate the, just blow that across?
Um, previous budgets have consolidated, uh, a bunch of lines. So, um, um, the way both budget where it's just supplies and just another, because I just salaries and then everything else gives a lot of flexibility across. I'm not yet close for departments, um, to right size on its own. Uh, but I, I don't know how we, I don't think we're going to collapse any further from supplies. I think there was likely, um, two lines collapsed into that.
Yeah.
And I, I saw, I just, just, just prompted me, I just saw dudes, but this is not the, I don't know why it prompted me. I saw an email about your, your rates changing, right? Over the next few years?
B C.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is, and that's, that's to just keep up with surrounding towns and keep up with, or is there another reason that we're?
Well, we actually looked at our costs.
Okay.
What it costs us to go out and do, uh, input restaurant inspection, store inspection. Um, things that within our department have changed. We now have our own pot kind health inspector.
Mm hmm.
Uh, the health inspector that we had previous to that, uh, above and beyond the fact that he was giving us an incredible deal. What he was charging us, um, had a lot of other irons in the fire.
Mm hmm.
Was getting near retirement.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and things like that. So we, we had to, uh, really look at with the town growing, uh, taking on N P B. Which was a contractor.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so our expenses were. Uh, we haven't adjusted our rates in a long, long time. Uh, so rather than try to keep up with other towns, just because, uh, we actually went and tried to, uh, calculate as close as we could what our costs were. Uh, and then we had a discussion with Jeremy and we were talking about the C B I.
Mm hmm.
And what a reasonable increase would be. Uh, and then of course we wanted to give all of our businesses ample notice. I think the information that went out doesn't take effect until January one, twenty twenty six.
Mm hmm.
So we, we gave everybody nine months' notice as to what the increase was going to be. And then we mapped that out three years, Jack.
Correct.
So that they know in advance what the increase is going to be. Uh, and then after that, we're going to reevaluate it. I'm sure, you know, we'll, uh, look at our costs again, uh, but the goal is going to be, uh, Jeremy kind of advised us that if we could keep up with the C P I, we should have a good hand or uncovering expenses. Now there are some things that water health covers that you don't get any money back to us if you don't cover all the expenses. It's a service that the border health provides because it doesn't just protect the restaurant owner, it protects all of us that go into the restaurant. So you can't put that on the backs of the restaurant owner. It's, it's a protection that's provided by the border health whenever.
So you're trying to keep those fees as fair as possible based on what it costs you to provide those specific feed services?
When I, excuse me, what I also care when I joined the board of health was that, um, from the board of health game is that, um, you know, if we're trying to go up a hundred dollars in particular fee from, you know, ten to a hundred and ten, you don't want to wait nine years then get to a hundred and ten. You want to do ten dollars a year to get there sort of thing. Even though it doesn't run out anymore of those, those years, um, it's much more, uh, allowable and easier to plan for from a business owner applicant's perspective rather than making huge jumps every couple of years. Along.
I have a question, not about necessarily this budget now, but I know a couple of years ago, we talked about contracts. It's a wheel breaker up in Milbury. And that there was a contract negotiated with a bunch of towns and that's about, uh, we're coming up on renewal.
Correct. And in the meeting with the, uh, thirty eight communities a couple of weeks ago, we are negotiating right now with our elevator about it probably won't be another twenty year contract. We'll be looking at a ten year contract, maybe looking at a five year contract. But we're just starting negotiations now. So again, the sub committees, the committees that gather, who's going to be in these now.
And how do you think that it will affect the individual household ratepayers? Do you have any idea what that number is going to be yet, what it's going to?
No, it's kind of an unusual situation. Because you would think like wheel breaker, wheel breaker generates pop off. So they need that trash. Uh, so you, you would hope that we'd have a, a, a very beneficial mutual agreement.
Hmm.
Um, but I think what we're seeing is their costs are going up at such a rate. The trucking is huge. Um, that at times when you start to look into it, it almost seems a little one sided. Now, we have heard that there may be, uh, other facilities coming online. Um, so if there's some competition for our trash, that would be helpful. Uh, but you know, Jack jumped right in, uh, enjoying the other towns, calling, uh, health inspector. You know, has got a finger on the pulse of what's going on. Um, but it's, it's going to be an interesting situation. We're hoping they need that trash a lot more than they appear to.
When does the current contract with all the towns expire?
The towns have different expiration dates. You learn this from what I mean, but ours was expired June twenty one seventh.
It's significant, like the disposal fee is significantly less than the collection fee, you know? See them trying to match the collection side, do you? You do?
Well, we, we have a good relationship on the, the yellow hobby side.
Okay.
Uh, and he's been very fair with us. Um, some of the, the junk the last time was going to those totes, which that's the way of the world now.
Mm hmm.
Uh, we went, the first time we go to totes, there's been a lot of towns afterwards that have been for us. Milford, you used to be able to put anything you wanted at the curb. And now they're down to, I believe, one ninety five gallon tota for each. So the, the totes are bigger than our sixty fives, but there, there's nowhere near what, what it was state. They had a real, their expense was just, just too high. Um, indeed, people are being encouraged to find a way to reuse, find a way to recycle. And, and, you know, the recycling unfortunately costs us more per ton to dispose of than the trash. Because it's got to be really good recycling.
Out of curiosity, is everyone here aware of what they can put out at the curb side? Trash?
I try really hard, but it's not easy. There's not that many items. Yeah.
Which I appreciate.
Yeah, it's got a picture on the inside.
Oh, well, the things that can be put there, that bucket and, but can't be put.
Yeah. I tell my kids if it had food on it, it's no, unless you clean the thing way out.
Well, it's fine. It's one of these, uh, one of the problems is a lot of two fifty five gallon shat balls on trash. So some people have been confused about what they can actually put out curb side.
Right, three.
Yeah, one beside. Everything looks to be bad. But we can also, uh, have that element of, add bags that they can.
And you can purchase tickets for extra trash up to, I forget how many bags or. Uh, but again, they would have to be in a tota. So you have to either purchase the Yale hobby, an extra tota or purchase yourself an extra sixty five gallon tota. And if you put two bags in it, each bag has to have a sticker.
So do they get out and check that the bags have the sticker in them or that truck has no cameras on it?
Inside, outside.
Cause it's only one guy driving the truck. They gotta be able to see everything. Yeah.
I think this question might be, you know, if somebody, the third, uh, tota up there is, uh, driving it now to looking at their total station bags and it had the sticker.
I can't say, but I'm, I'm willing to bet he catches it when he's down there.
Yeah. So you're telling me the third, the, if, if you put an extra, the, the second trash barrel needs stickers or doesn't?
Well, it doesn't need to.
No, it's only if you want third.
You're, you're allowed two sixty five gallon totes. One is provided for you with the program. You're allowed to either purchase on your own or through Yale hobby, the second one for trash. Right, for trash. If you go above and beyond that, now you're into bags with stickers on a little limit of four. But I, I think it's pretty rare. I mean, I drive the streets of town quite often. Uh, and, uh, it's very rare that I see anybody with anything other than one extra toter.
Yeah, I have one extra and I bring it out like every few weeks.
I could just bring us back to the budget question.
Yeah, budget, budget.
So, in general tonight.
That's why.
So, and as, um, maybe at some point we can have the board of health back in, because this is really very interesting for us. But, uh, just in the interest of moving things along, do we have any more budget related questions?
I would just like to say that all department heads should be looking at this.
Kind of.
I've said this before, they do a fantastic, fantastic.
Yes.
Uh, I love it and this should be the standard for the time.
Well, just saying to them, like, I think we're doing it a little too much. So I'll just say do one feature for next year like this.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I think it, I need him all like to sort of find my way around it, but once I did, I'm like, oh, this is a little bit of a.
Yeah, step shot.
Snap, snap, and then, yeah, so but it's, it's very helpful, very, uh, useful for getting the discussion.
Can we, I'll just probably story, story.
Yes, it is.
And it's actually has helped me have conversations with other citizens about like what was going on and then had questions about what was the thing? You're currently thinking, Tom, you, you know, it's going with the trash stuff. Tell me. Jack does a great job. Excellent. You done great.
That's true. Right. So, um, so thank you so much for joining us. I don't know if you.
Don't forget to close your meeting before you leave.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So, uh, yeah, let's do that.
Second motion, all in favor? I, Tom, I.
Joe's I.
Thank you guys for all your output. Thank you, Madam Chair, for moving us along.
So, uh, next. So, uh, invite, uh, members that we have spread to join us in this game. Thank you for joining us and thank you for your patience. Hopefully you find this, the topic of trash, this is all. Thank you for joining us and thank you for your patience. Hopefully you find this the topic of trash, this is all as interesting as we do. So it'll use like, please, uh, it'll use yourself. One, one thing, I'm sorry, I think, uh, just one moment, I don't think people can hear you, is it? Sorry. If you could please use yourself again, sorry, my phone is probably picking up a lot of voice.
That's great, that's interesting.
Thank you.
Talking about, I didn't have this kind of super technical application, and have had that, and then that's been thirty two years. I'm joined by uh, by a superintendent at the museum, Comexes usual, FY twenty six, which I'm hoping for you, and also to apply to veterans who are now a trade. Uh, Cracer is very actively with subcommittees, as well as the school committee. A year ago, you would have advanced copies of the budget and uh, actually, so we invited those to you. I trust with your hands, does anybody else need a copy? Okay, well said.
Yes, so keep sending those around in advance, we appreciate that.
Okay, uh, last week, uh, the new town manager, Jeremy came over for a tour, it's up to my invitation to do that. Uh, it was in that funny, it's a great office, one of the, as well as the news. You know, thirty two years ago, I presented to the chair of the front, Mr. Holmes, in this very room. And so, um, I'd like to thank you for your professionalism and cooperation over the years. Uh, it's always been a very professional exchange. Uh, and we have a member in for fundings, which seldom the most popular thing to do, but across the fifteen towns. Um, I'm going to acknowledge that Menon has a six percent ownership in uh vocational basketball school. Uh, and seventy five students uh, who of course benefit from the millions of dollars of resources that are available at the conference. Earlier today, uh, we met with uh the project manager and the architect who had been assigned to our roof project that was approved by you and by all thirteen towns. And we continue to advance through that process. The uh, in advance of this meeting, not only did we provide copies of the preliminary budget, cause it hasn't been voted. Uh, in fact, legislature hasn't even acted on it yet. I, uh, but I also provided uh preliminary information estimates to the new town administrator to be helpful. And then it's fair to say that those estimates are pretty close to the final number. Um, we're looking for a hundred and thirty two thousand more dollars in the year ago. Quick math, right, uh, because of the expenses of the business. On the fact sheet, um, that I made, start with that. Okay, it has a proposed operational assessment, one million five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars. Uh, system that was divided initially through uh emails. Um, there is no debt in FY twenty six. Our conversations with the national building authority, um, was critical through the eventual reimbursement for that project. Um, indicated to us that the school committee does not have to advance any volume by twenty six. So we're not a model to be needed. Um, there is an interesting issue well known concern of people officially in order to secure the best rates and also the least most reasonable bids. Also, the architect was quick to find out, um, that there is a number of roof projects on the way in the state of Massachusetts, if not Wayne. Uh, and we understand that as well. And so, um, we intentionally observed and monitored our roof. Which, you have to, a roof has to be at least twenty five meters of age to qualify for the state projects, we wouldn't qualify for that. Uh, and that we, we pounced as soon as the state reopened that accelerated repair. Uh, we've used that multiple times, uh, and am glad to do that again. Um, the previous reimbursement has been fifty three percent. They, they, they're hesitant to call it a percentage of reimbursement at this juncture. Uh, but we're, we continue to be optimistic that it will be of that magnitude when when things sort of pass. However, there's no debt in FY twenty six, uh, and the towns have all been notified of that.
Dr. Schadner, can you repeat the proposed reimbursement or all the reimbursement questions? In your repeat of possible reimbursement percentage, I missed it.
The, the, our track record with the high school building has been fifty three percent. And um, they have not committed to a number, not even they normally commit to a number.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I actually have a question on that. Um, Menedup to the regional school district is doing a roof, so there's many in Massachusetts, it's a one across the street from New York that they're doing. Um, and they are at a similar point in the process as you are, I believe. And they do expect to incur costs in FY twenty six, um, for their projects. So are you saying there's a, if you do incur costs in the next, you know, sixteen months or something, you're just not going to issue debt for it, it's something you can handle internally, or do you not expect to incur any costs?
Well, I'll be retired, I mean.
I hope he was hired.
I haven't envisioned that the people accept, uh, is obligation to meet the amount of money necessary for the, the six, not to lose the maintenance of the product. Right, I don't speak to those, any other product, of course, the state, the supervision, and the very best in theirs. Um, so that's our, that's plain as I understand. Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just had a clarifying question as well, I just wanna make sure, i- it sounds like you will definitely, you you you're in the program, you will get reimbursed. The question is only how much would that percentage be, correct? There will be some reimbursement coming, because I know there was a, it was a conditional approval based on this getting into the program.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're, you might say we're two thirds through the program. I think at this point, okay, um, and so, and and so I think just meeting with the architect today, first time he's he's into our system. Um, but we have a lot, a lot of experience in master buildings, uh, and that was advantageous in our conversations with them. So that that's where it sits at the moment, it's an accidental question.
Yeah, it sounds like reimbursement will be coming, the extent of how much it will be is really the variable that I'm I'm unknown right now.
And uh, there's some other aspects with this that make me you normally submit on the accelerated repair volumes, uh, your billing up to fifty, uh, fifty thousand dollar increments. Uh, and so if you submit them, you're all for reimbursement immediately. And so, um, your borrowing is staggered, you don't have to borrow all the money in advance, cause everything's not done in advance. Uh, and yet your reimbursement is, um, you know, consistent and 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 allowed to be applied, applied back. Um, so it might be most important to note, the last four projects we did, we didn't have to transfer any money. We self funded them, got the reimbursement and and at the rate I just mentioned. Uh, and then restored or replaced excess and deficiency money that we had self funded. This part, this piece, this project's a little too big for that.
Right.
Uh, so that's why we did it. The um key factor for Menon is a point of the, the town administrator uh, is the state's absolute minimum obligation. Okay, uh, although there was no change in your student enrollment, um, although most whole systems above the state had documented. Uh, the state asked or directed roughly seventy five thousand more than that absolute minimum. Uh, we inherit that from the state. And the state has explained that it's based on the two thousand twenty two property values, two thousand twenty one income levels. Uh, and um, considered to be a location rates for each community. Uh, the uh, there's been a we're witnessing a gradual reduction of the impact of the schools. Alright, so uh, we're seeing uh, across the state, a wide variety, okay, of the way they wish the state has implemented the absolute minimum contributions. Um, some have simply said, well, with two hundred and thirty five school systems having reduced enrollment, they had to come up with another way to not to put much weight on that particular factor. Uh, but that's where you have it for a lot of systems. And I, I would point out, as I did on the information sheet, that if you look at our request of a hundred and thirty two thousand more dollars, eighty two point four percent is that is attributable to the state's absolute minimum. So, um, that's describing the numbers. Are there any questions on that? I'll walk through the budget.
You you just wrote, just to clarify, I mean, make sure I understand what you're saying, when you say eighty two point four percent of the increase you're asking above last year's appropriation, eighty two percent of that is based on the state saying your minimum local contribution's going on.
Yeah, that's the absolute minimum component portion of it, that's correct. We're in, actually.
Okay, I thought what you actually mean for saying is that of the one point five million that you're asking for, that eighty two point four percent of that one point five million is the state absolutely.
Is driven by the state's company.
Yes, that's, that's different.
Yeah, that's how I took it when I read it, but then when I heard it, it sounded it was.
Yeah, so you're asking, so eighteen percent of your apps, seventeen point six percent of your apps is above what the state is obligating the town to.
That's what it costs for them on the system, to meet our obligations.
And that's not unusual. The minimum local contribution generally does not cover the cost of running any schools. So it's not unusual to have it above, but the clarification makes sense.
Yeah, it's a point that we made in the visit. Um, kind of very good experience, as you shared, is with a single community and 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 little different provisional systems. Okay, because they're by design, the state has acknowledged that the absolute number doesn't cover the expenses for these. For things like transportation, right? You're quite right. The obligation was put together by our students and uh, this is, this was done with the, the early presentations. We we note that our public area is not till the thirteenth uh of March, uh, and so it's no, we're operating on estimates and plan, we do not expect budget to change. Uh, the state chapter seventy money is ministerial, you probably noticed that. Uh, and the legislation may enhance it, they've almost been invited to enhance it. Um, last year, that state revenue was based on a hundred and four dollars of the food, because the new, the first wave from the governor is a mere seventy five dollars. Obviously, that's, that's not paying for much. Um, so we're optimistic that this legislature will enhance the chapter seventy, but not substantial. If if I may, I'll walk through the budget. The the next page is the budget subcommittee, uh, it's a cross section, including Mr. Cray, our representation for the school committee, the administrative team, and other centers. School district has its own treasury, uh, and conducts its own audit each year, uh, which is also included in the plan. All the meetings were conducted over a five to six month period, all hosted, uh, in the next district as well. So very active. Anyone who presented, whether it be an athletic director or vocational coordinator, um, we're all expected to be able to defend their request, uh, to be able to confirm that they had tried to secure the lowest possible cost for doing something. And that they had tried to acquire the item either by resource or donation of upgrade, um, which is consistent with our process. The the next page is my summary, my thirty second summary, okay, uh, for the budget package. And there are referenced even some of the major changes. Uh, with some pride, we we point out that they've raised three million dollars again in grants, uh, to enhance the resources of your whole tech system, without asking the towns to pay for that. That translates to two thousand four hundred dollars for every student that's that is enrolled. It references the um, National Building Authority project, which is underway. Huge, huge goal. We point out that um, the regional transportation, we've got the seventy one, is the benefit that both we and all regional schools benefit from. Uh, we're projecting eighty percent, I think that's a reasonable reimbursement number, uh, based on the trending, uh, and they built that in. We hope it's greater than that, if it is, that gets applied, you know, to in some cases, it gets carried over to reduce subsequent budgets, which we did pay over. The the green sheet is a summary of revenue, uh, activities should have taken place. I made reference to the chapter seventy. The tally of that is less than two percent increase, which obviously puts the burden upon the communities, and that's why I guess I was making the request that we are making with you. Um, the the school committee, um, has, at least it's one of the subcommittee, has um designed several revenue streams to reduce or to enhance the limits of the state. Uh, one is that we, um, the district is using two hundred and fifty thousand of its excess and deficiency to reduce the overall budget. As a, I don't know, a good faith measure of our contribution to that. I know there's, you've asked in the past, what is the magnitude of the excess and deficiency accounts certified for the department revenue? That number is just under one point five million, at this point, we've been using it, so probably about half that. So, the, um, one of the other things we did in two thousand, I think, for shooting, so.
You're saying you are now at about half that, so around, you believe you're around seven fifty?
I would say seven fifty.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that before or after taking into account the proposal?
Uh, it 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 would, uh, it takes some consideration to. So, can I answer that one?
Yes.
Um, in two thousand fifteen, the state sent us delayed billing or pension for non teachers. Uh, and indicated that they, uh, they were apologizing that that billing had come in late. And we challenged that, and said, well, you can't notify us in two fifteen for billing to two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen. And that the, um, was it, but the lack of the state's timely billing created a situation where we would, um, challenge it. And we did, we didn't pay it. Um, the auditors suggested that we treat it as a lien, uh, because it wasn't really forgiven at that point. Um, and so we didn't, we were not granted amnesty on that. So, um, that, that is a total of four hundred thousand dollars. And basically, two hundred thousand for each of those two years. Um, we, the auditor, the independent audit that went through the school system confirmed that at this point, the time that's run out, that, um, that it is forgiven, there's been no claim requested. And now we wanna do, rather than pay that, a bill that we didn't have to pay, we wanna credit it back to the towns. So we're drawing two hundred, two hundred thousand this year for FY twenty six and more than what you could anticipate, FY twenty seven. Um, there's a new superintendent, that he also can can use two hundred thousand dollars as an offset. So, um, we, we thought that was in the best interest of the towns, we really don't try to be difficult paying any bills. But but there are times when we challenge things legally, uh, and we do our best to protect the investment that's made for this. So, the, so you see the revenue streams that are listed here, uh, and then the specific cost items. Total budget increases five point seven, highlighted in the materials provided to you. Uh, and also shared in the advanced information down there. Any questions on that? On the backside of the revenue sheet, um, the district, once again, is uh, already told that it hopes to use up to seven hundred thousand, I think. Yeah, so, seven hundred thousand, um, to, um, for, to cover the cost of additional capital items, that would be the balance of the excess and deficiencies. Okay? So, the um uh, the thing sheet is a town by town of, you know, all of the happening in this process, uh, which is particularly helpful when you're paying for roof. Uh, or any bond or the other activities to benefit from the the overall shared responsibilities. Um, and at this point, the superintendent, myself, making the rounds, if you will, from town to town. Uh, this is our second finance committee presentation. Uh, we presented in Milbury, um, I will point out, they presented a cake to me for thirty two years, then I will be expressing a cake.
We have plenty of free candy.
Anyway, over those thirty two years, we, you know, we've always started to have professional relationships. The thirteen town meetings, uh, sixty select persons, and a hundred and twenty six finance members. Many of whom I can't give you the names, so, uh, anyway, this is the breakout, uh, for the impact of that absolute minimum, uh, is a more challenging people, that's all I can say. Okay, so, are any questions?
It's a quick question, you mentioned that seven hundred thousand, uh, from reserves going to capital, which brings it that down to, at the end of this budget, about fifty thousand or less in terms of what other reserves do you have on hand that are for what other reserves do you have on hand that are for rainy days? I mean, you you've not depleted your E and D completely, have you?
Yeah, we would be committed, as we have over the first thirty-three years or thirty-one years, is to replenish E and D. We're going to add some other revenues. We do is, when a grant is a whole, if it covers anything that's in the budget, it's a piece of money in the county, and it can go excess and efficiency. So the district is committed, and the school committee knows full well that we don't want to delete that. We need to make, we need to restore it, and we've done that year after year. When I started, there was no E and D. And that D and D now, last year was, as I say, almost one and a half. So we will be building that back up. The purpose of the seven hundred thousand is to be able to cover the kind of expenses we talked about, the the roof project and other kinds of things. This is how we'll pay for that rather than asking to borrow money.
Yeah, and it, all good, but it just, when I, when I hear the number getting that low in a reserve fund, in the event grants are not acquired, are you finding you, I just want to make sure, Dwight, did I hear it right? Are you sort of at a, almost to a zero balance, but with the expectation you'll be building it back up? Or is there a baseline that you have, a percentage of your budget that you always keep there that you build up from? Does that make sense?
Yeah, several grants under way now.
No, we recognize the proof factor of not lighting out that comp, and we have none of that.
These aren't federal grants, though. These are, they're sort of.
Yeah, mostly competitive grants, like Skills USA, they, sorry, capital skills. We talked about, you know, a lot of those opportunities we have. It's essentially, you know, something to naturally do. Patrick said we do a lot of these projects, but when we get money back through the cycle, I mean, the E and D creates another opportunity to get us additional funds.
A reliable cash flow mechanism.
Yeah, it's a nice engine for us to, like, school.
And so long as you can do that supplanting for those funds, because a lot of grants end up being supplemented, so.
Well, it's an interesting question, because years ago, sort of planning was an odd exception issue. It's less so now because of the federal government, not just recent changes with the new president, but they're far more flexible than what used to be so. Also, on the back of the budget book, there's a delineation of some of the grants that we're in pursuit or have secured.
So so E and D, from my perspective, is a lot like our free cash, right, in terms of the way? So so how much of your E and D is potentially generated by just expense management versus supplemental grant activity? Yeah, I know it's a combination. I'm just curious what the allocation is. Do you generally find that you've got a, you know, a certain threshold in expense management that helps, you know, increase your 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 E and D along with those grants? Just kind of, so for us, free cash, it's going to be a combination of revenues exceeding our forecast and expense management. Those are our two primary factors. I'm just kind of curious how the, how the breakout works for you.
I mean, if you don't make it on one side, you make it on the other.
So historically, how how is that broken down? Do you do you see? And if you don't have the data, that's fine. I'm just more curious. I'm kind of, take it back to the way we're doing things, thinking it's something we can learn here.
Because we don't, we don't realize how that third lever that you're talking about with this third income stream of grants, granting general fund expenditure. What we have is, you know, timing chapter ninety correctly, closing deficits in police detail funds. So we're not ding dong, free cash at the end of the year. That's kind of our third lever. It's much smaller.
Yeah, I'm just more curious about the the breakdown within the BBT budget, only because I'm I'm on the MR, MRSD side, the cap budget subcommittee. So I get a better sense of how they are handling their reserve, just trying to align it to how you you do your reserves.
Well, one of the advantages we have is that eighteen vocational tactical programs that we enjoy a particular cooperative relationship with the staff and students. Sometimes they'll take one, but they're also about the town gate, you know, at least the plans for that. And so that helps us to save money. If we do things to the teacher. So if we don't get it, we might go first for the grant, but we don't get a key grant, and we try to pick it up through cost effective. So, but we never sacrifice the quality of something to the students. Just some interesting stats, in the sense that in the past year, we've had no legal entanglements. We have no laws. We've had good grievances. Having freed of those legal complications that handcuff many systems, many communities, allows us to maximize the dollars we receive. Interesting, someone asked me about the dollar. Instead, if we're given a dollar, the treasury invested for at least a five percent return. So that's a dollar five cents, right? If we get three million dollars in grants, that's worth about ten cents. So now the dollar is a dollar five, dollar fifteen. If we get fifty percent or fifty-three percent back in reimbursement, you're picking up another fifty cents. So now you give up a dollar sixty-five, a dollar seventy cents, spending that for the dollar. But you don't have them initially. That's all through the process of the issue point out, effective management of the other dollar. But we, we've never gone back for additional money. It's a one-time request and hope it's supported. And then we live, we live with that.
And it works. That's good.
We should be at this table like, love.
Put it on the punch list.
The next page is a quick understanding of no anticipated debt by six. There was, mentally, we were thinking, we were doing that. So as soon as we received clarification from state, we didn't calculate the responsibility. We notified all the towns within forty hours, and notified all the towns available. And so that's the kind of issue. Next page is the summary of the state, you know, line item series. A question was raised previously. If you look down the bottom, it says bonds, interest. It says five thousand dollars. It's a doc that I thought you said they weren't borrowing. I think it's five thousand. That's in the event the school has to do any emergency borrowing. But that's always been a placeholder, at least a small contribution to take action. The school can also, can also follow against, they call it, rents, revenue at any anticipated streams, if you will. And so that, there are other ways to do that, but we don't follow those yet. The previous bond was on twenty years ago, totally paid off, and now we see it cooled by all the towns. And the reimbursement of that was seventy-five point five percent. That was a different error. As you work your way through the pages, issues that have broken out, question that surfaced, more ruptured, teacher contract, three percent. Okay, it's open to be negotiated. This is the third, FY twenty-six is the third year of a three-year contract. And so we've not very closely negotiated in twenty-seven. We have added joint apps in the contracts with teachers and others, and most of the contracts have been three-year periods. Another question was, how about your transportation? Where are you with that? FY twenty-six is in the fourth year of the transportation contract with the Denny firm from Franklin and Gellingham. They've been excellent partners. The deep percentage increase for FY twenty-six for the budget is a seven percent increase, which is significantly less than what we're told other school systems are. So, and of course, as a regional, you'd be eligible for reimbursement on chapter seventy-one. What are the two principal drivers of the cost? Well, there are two principal increases on a cash draw, not so much percentage. Pensions, okay, and retiree health benefits, which are both outside of absolute minimum. Those are the two primary costs. But all the pension costs do not include me because I have yet to retire. There's reservations along the way. In fact, I'll throw some summaries of the the process, multiple step processes that use. We've had visitors from across the district, mine who inquire, and also a lot of graduate students. About a hundred of the graduates who have asked to sit in and clear it, and that's the idea. Both Mr. Steele and myself have been invited periodically to any presentations. I'll just, we don't have all the interviews. But we're both veteran administrators, and we're glad to share different perspectives, kind of giving that to the people who helped us along the way. We find the delineation of the grants, although we're in pursuit of others, we only, these are not claims. These were just, this is things that we've had been secured or under consideration at this point and were awaiting. An example of that would be two million dollars that was given up to us under the capital skills program, the governance program, that is currently being used to renovate food service in Cali Island. The Secretary of Labor in Massachusetts visited us yesterday to observe that project and also to promote women in construction, okay, which is obviously a worthy goal.
So did you just say two million?
Three million.
True. So the one point two five that's listed here, then?
Yes. That's, that, yes, no, three million in total. Okay, and the Cali Islands aspect is one point two five alone, but there's other money that is awarded that will be used to the project. And where there's a shortage of what's needed, that's where we're going to draw from, yeah, seven thousand. And we don't go to the towns for it. We'll be able to complete it. This is a moving list, and in the sense of, we're adding on this all the time. And we talked about a couple of grant possibilities today. If anyone's aware, are there any additional grant programs that you shared with us? We'd be glad to investigate. We only chase grants that are consistent with our mission. We won't chase grants for writing rights, and that's what makes sense. I think it's often some. Summary, that's. It's worth requesting, I've attended your town meeting every year, and I expect, if I'm willing, I hope to be there again this year.
So there's still hope for another cake? Great, thank you. That's great information.
Yeah, I appreciate the detail.
Well, I actually had a question that I meant to ask. So first of all, thank you as well. I just opened up a presentation by saying, I visited last week, two weeks ago, I forget now, so thank you for all the stuff. It was great. It it helped a lot. You know, seeing a bunch of document stacked together is a lot different than getting to walk around and meet teachers and have lunch. And and see all the equipment and all the all the student engagement points. So it was a really wonderful visit, and I think for that. I know it's a smaller part of your formula, enrollment is obviously a small part of these, but enrollment is a piece of it. So there's proposed legislation, enrollment being a lottery-driven after. Over subscribed, so to speak. How do you see that, you know, should should the legislation pass? How how will you see that affecting what the towns kind of relative makeup?
Let me answer first, and I'll come to second. Enrollment still plays a part in the additional assessment. When you initially joined this partnership, sixty-five years ago, if you had ten percent of the students, you had ten percent of the same thing. However, of around the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, not counting the four that are in the Reservoir, okay, the state dealt with legal challenges. We talked about disparity of education quality depending on a community's wealth. And so the state came up with its plan to look at the factors that it currently uses in determining each community's eligibility. So where we can control by enrollment, the the specific equalized per people cost of additional settlement, that's been discussed, but the biggest part is outside of it. And so I'll let Anthony speak, relative to the new plans relative to the state encouraging, but not yet committed.
So obviously, it's something you participate really for the seven years now, right? It's been somewhat of a difficult problem to solve to be a perfect solution to vocational technical. Most recently, it's made its way into the public because of the sort of education has been the different proposals from the Department of Education, a one eighty admissions policy, specifically qualified. If you were, they have stood for graphical pieces of that language. Right now, they are stuck on which qualifying criteria they would use to enter a lottery. So the discussion is really revolved around in-depth data analysis, attendance, and also discipline. So if a student had more than ten unexcused instances and more than ten suspension days, exclusion and expulsion or suspension days, then they would be disqualified from entering a lottery. So that has been the most recent conversation. They paused because they were considering whether or not the interview was an essential component to engage a student's interest. Attendance, they want to make sure a student that they go, is entering a lottery, really is going to make use of it, or show up at school and take advantage of it. Discipline, they recognize that, and access of ten suspension days is a little greater. They eventually might be safe in that environment. I mean, that's real. And the interview, and acknowledgement that it's a lot to make sure the students that coming to Valley Tech have a purposeful reason and tend to make good use of that education. So the question is, will it be a lottery or not? I would say that it is more than likely that that is going to happen. The question mark is, what will this criteria be to enter said lottery? In terms of amendment, you have a six percent operational ratio now. It it, you could take a quick glance of the data, this applies to all thirteen of our towns, and see very quickly that the number of applications when we hit the town varies quite widely. Therefore, if we're going to do a lottery sample, statistically sample of applicants, it would follow that same trend line. If you had a lot of applicants, you'd get spike. If you had a lower year of applicants, you'd have a drop. That doesn't make any sense for a town, but the town administrators, we, actually. What we think would be the smart thing to do, we've been analyzing different ways of looking at a town's operational share. So either a three or five-year look back period. We've looked at this as an eighth grade population. We've also looked at it at K twelve and four, very similar. But it would be a rolling three or five-year average that would stabilize a town's ratio ratio, and then set in a quota at that. It that brings up some other questions. I think you have some towns that would elect, wish to have additional seats if they were available. You might have some towns that say no, hard cap there. So some things to work out. What is that, implement that? But you would have to add something to that effect in full. That would be, you don't have to open a charter to do that. It would be part of the admissions policy, which is to be developed by each vocational school district, by the school committee each year, and annually is reauthorized each year. So it would be folded into that, you know, whatever that new mission policy looks like. But one of our first concerns is how we stabilize our towns. In terms of your six percent share, that is on a open merit-based system. I believe you're very close right now, that if you did start a rolling three or five-year look back, you're very close to six percent. So I think it's going to be a significant change if we were to.
Thank you. That's great. Details of estimation is on the top of this comprehensive answer.
We have the benefit of looking at rolling trends that we reported through one of the professional organizations that we run. In addition, we have not had an issue, or the state has not had an issue with us, because I received indications that they were challenging. Because we made modifications. For example, if someone just asks and would provide medical explanations to the applicants, they will forgive it. So we, we're always compassionate and sensitive to the situations of the students who apply with a thirteen. The state of Massachusetts, with its variety of urban and suburban communities, oftentimes comes to conclusions on the basis of the earths. Okay, they have the greatest representation at the State House, and they're also receiving the greatest money of state revenue, education money is distributed. And so that's not a good lens for for. And so that's not a good lens for, for the community, sir. We just ask the communities, and we have invited people. Also, we have three state senators and five state reps. We work closely with them and others. Not everyone is in agreement that lottery is the solution. In fact, the one place where it is contested, that the staff there tell us that they're accomplishing more problems than they wish they could do. And so. That incidentally, yes, definitely. In addition, we produced, we dropped these off earlier, because this is one of our return on investments. First, again, if I rest these, these were up earlier, being more obvious.
Thank you.
Goodness me, bring it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, sir.
One more question, presentation here, we have the amended police department. Chief person here, if you'd like us to table please.
It's Dan.
Stephen too.
And I'll say.
This can be, so, I'll be going police dispatch, where you mentioned it. You'll get a nice presentation from me next year, most of this is going to be a couple of services, and in some cases, not even the dollar fund, so. So write down. So police salaries, as you say, actually, an increase, and those are all going to be contrastable. During this work of the other night, it looks like it's a bigger increase than it actually is. Because I would speed, I used this year, I was at a special town meeting. FY25, and that's going to be FY26, so it probably goes 7%.
Yeah.
And it's actually going through the process.
My, my 725 presented, both police and fire do a really excellent job of providing their salary workbooks, their workups, that show really detailed base pay, and then all of the columns of additional data, contractual obligations, and those are all rolled into this budget, both the second line of the C Quinn bill. And then the same thing, I talked about fire, police does really well about putting out the contractual days off that require cooperation. When Isaac sick day, no one comes in, when patrolman takes sick day, we need to back all that, so those overtime costs need dialing up a little bit.
I think it's, that's going to do it, too, I think to Jeremy, I think you're going to try to use that as a template in the future.
Yeah, thankfully, there are parts aren't as complicated as here, so I just have to use the first part.
I got you. So that, that was pretty much just all calculations, we have a spreadsheet looking by 17, and that's an over time, I mean, just looking for level funding, and that, it did go up last year 6,000, so I don't know why it wasn't quite fully adopted, was it?
I'm going to say that's probably a spring bug issue, but I have spring bug.
Yes, that's level, last year we actually turned back quite a bit of money in salary and wages, we had one off in common extended leave. That should come to regulation both for the next few months, and that's why I have money this year, that I left it in the budget last year. So we had to increase overtime, because we've gone on a line, and I can use that extra money, those level of salaries, to set that for the year now, you know. Open, this year, I will be pretty accurate with it, and that officer back, or we replace that officer back to usual staffing and funding in that area. The request probably will come next year, I've asked every single year since I've been chief for nine years for additional officer. By now, being chief for nine years, I was going to have it, it's two additional officers, but I initially got one in 2015, 16. I think the chair or thin down, and it supported it for one additional officer, and they brought us up to 14 full timers. That was the same staff we had in 2008, before the financial crisis, and we laid off a few officers. So right now, we're still at the same exact staffing we had in 2008. And that's why they see a nice presentation, I see the officer talk, I understand, I mean, we're speaking of me. And to my guys' point, with the call volume, which has been over the past 18 years, we weren't at our max capacity, we had our max staffing that we needed to do back then, but now we're at the point where those, those stats and the increase in call volume is catching up to 10% of this. And, and there's some extra luxuries that we'd like to have, too. We have one school resource officer, we have two schools in town, but they have them on each, each location, right? Especially after we've established a school, if I guess, and COVID has been on the rest of it. You know, it will be the cruciate bucking, school shootings, and success schools, and even just after COVID, we have many generations now that we've implemented all issues because of that time away from school, and did that back in school, we've seen a lot of public issues that we're dealing with in general. That's why we formed a unit, actually, a commission that's on staff now, that we share with multiple communities to address that since 2020. So those are, those are needs we're going to have in the future, I'll address next year when I definitely ask for at least one officer. The main reason to ask this year is we have a definite retirement in November. We have an officer who is eligible to try acid right now. They're not sure, it's sergeant, he's not sure if he's going to leave right away, or stay for a while. He, he won't leave unless he finds a employment in the private sector, so he's looking at colleges, and if he ends up getting a job as a supervisor role in college, he'll probably say it's time to move on right now. Even if he doesn't get a job right now, it's only going to be a couple of years, because he's maxed out, he's not going to stay too much longer. So I had to just make that, and then obviously the officer leave, I'm not sure, I mean, hoping that officer will return, but they did, I'd have to fill that role too. So fill three positions right now at the job market, the way it is, it's tough to do itself. So I didn't want to ask for any allocation of funds to dedicate another officer, not be able to fill those three right away. So that's, you know, I want to make sure that we, I can take, you know, a piece of the fire for someone else that needs it right now in the budget. And I've turned back the free dash. So that will be coming next year, but I at least want you guys to know that it's in the rise, and this is the first year I probably haven't asked for it. But those are the reasons why I haven't.
I just thought it reminded me. Last time I budgeted this year.
Yeah, that's true, we do enough to down stop and take care of it, and I don't want any more complexity.
Yeah, but with four firefighters being asked for it.
Yeah, I'll let everything settle down and figure it out. We don't know what the Congress is going to look like, I think it'll look better idea next year after the first year of the presidency. So, you know, obviously, every election year is a little tough, that first year back, if they look traditionally, how much they vote, you know, federal, state, local. So you guys look at our idea next year on this time. Thank you.
Before we leave salaries, I want to close the loop on 140, so the originally passed budget was at 134, and then special town meeting added 3,000, and the select board reserve negotiation at 3,000, so that brought it to 140. So revised overtime on the third 24 is 140.
Those were the adjustments made based on the increased salaries to ensure we felt, increased of office salaries to up there.
I'm not saying we should go after and parts like this, but the actually had a, there's that grant option, getting more FTEs, is there anything notable in that for?
Police cops hasn't existed on the cops program, but is, like Andrew Mike was a little public, so probably 10 years, get away with them. And when they were available, we applied for them this year.
Yeah.
It's a spring fields, but they'll be.
I mean, that makes sense, but they'll be here, you know, average, you know, for the, the town, and they think you can afford it, you know.
Especially when you go deep against, you know, law.
Yeah, no, I can, I can empathize with that approach, yeah.
So we, we apply, and we get unusual state grants that, the traffic grants, pretty much every week as long as you apply. The number one branch, we don't get so much, we have a different regional dispatch, I would receive millions of the past decade. That built a vital structure to dispatch. Even though we're a regional dispatch, we still be there on every additional dispatch, so most of that was paid through the state. Then grants are available through, near our skin, our, or we'll just use Jerry's account to put in 41 for additional radio site for the school, because our grid has always been horrible there, so we're trying to get an additional site there, the cost is over $100,000. Why be better, obviously, with your grant?
Yeah.
Eventually, we're going to have to look at it on our own.
That's just like a repeater system that comes into the schools?
Yeah, it's going to be an additional repeater that, it's a brick building, so maybe if you get in there, you can't get anything in there. So it's going to create a repeater system inside those, the roof, that now can get out repeaters. Because right now, if you're in a portable, it's useless, you can't, you can't communicate. So that's a, that's a huge safety, and obviously, we, we've known about that for a long time, but we drilled down on it. Probably both 4 or 5 years ago, emergency management, how that it was, in fact, several, in there, and, I mean, what's, wow, operating. I didn't appreciate that.
But we talked about switching technologies, or like, you know, using cellular with cellular over wifi, there's a lot of, I saw a lot of solutions at the conference this year, I was actually not surprised how many different radio solutions there are. There are, you know, Verizon cells, handhelds that do sell radio and wifi, like that kind of like whole town type of solution. Has that been oscillated or anything?
Yeah, because, because all of them get to fire, because a lot of, you know, they actually contract connect, now we issue some neck. So we, as our contractor, we work closely, so there are, we set copper lines right here, so we recently just updated fire. So that fire line is now going to the schools, support the system, so it is doing some type of hybrid system that's going to work off the satellite.
All right.
Because what's going to happen is that repeater is going to hit our repeater, it's going to the fiber, and then go right to our network, right? So, because we even, of course, our
Radio.
Radio, we even get a hard time getting there.
Right.
So we're not, the radio is involved to the repeater, and it's going to go out to the fire, the fire line, and that, and like from that communicates with us now. There's five lines that run literally from neck, you know, for a dual redundancy system that comes here.
Is there any benefit to just sitting down with Jay to talk about the capital infrastructure they're doing at Nisco, is there any, would you leverage any of that that they're doing, because they're talking about wiring this, that, and the other thing, and it's a lot of.
I'll, we have.
Well, they want to replace all their intercoms and, and, you know, classroom communication systems, so. I mean, if you were able to broadcast over those as well.
But that will be then broadcast, we, we just need communications to that rate, so, so that doesn't really do it, we, and we don't underbid, we're staying on that, so. So our comms, and we want to go in there and have a com truck come in and patch frequencies, so we can go on private channels and then to, if something was to happen, we say, broadcast it over to the school. Three comms. So that's kind of a level with the school. And we tie an emergency management for this, that it have a great plan, go a lot of money to a plan, not wait for something to happen, because a lot of people they have emergency management, but they just cannot have emergency management related to, like, what we're getting at. They show the policies and procedures dedicated to something happening, and that's what they're working on. Now, the school is just, we did do a temporary fix bill, that's one of my, I think, use of this for any more funds, because that was designated to do communications, the town between fire and police, and we did a patch system that was $20,000. That was from the copper lines, that was about six years ago, starting to fail, it's most of the point, where it's failing. That's why we're looking at grants to go fiber, and then look at different avenues with different technology, which I'm sure they tie it all into now with our system. We were going digital. These are feds with most of the brands, give you money for digital, you still have to be, you know, capable of your regional partners, to get all them to do digital, it's almost possible.
Right, so you're converting analog to digital, sending it over fiber, converting it back, so you have to have all those.
And then mostly for regional purposes, I mean, the same ones, regionalize, we talked about it, and that's one of the ways they're trying to do it, they restrict your grant funding, make you all do the same thing, so eventually, for real, we just all want this. Instead of low man, high man, visual. In terms of high man. That's a school part of it. That's been the school resource, I've said, most of my, all my expenses are level funded, by multiple services. Every July, I've done this, I've since been chief, I go over all my contracts, I've been negotiating, most of them are set on five-year contracts. I'm not set to go into a new contract, I'm more, I'm expecting any increases. Jeremy did a great job doing that, announced all, all lines, we located a couple in police department, that probably went across often, COVID phones that we had in the cruisers. Instead of the guys coming back in the station, the officer coming back in the station during COVID to use phones, to use the phones, we're trying to keep them separate, we find the cell phones in the cruisers. And then they picked up what they were using for a while, because they don't like using their own cell phones. As I've noticed the past year or so, because that's using their own cell phones, and even though they can stand it, so they like to be in certain cell phones, we're not using the scanners, we're going to have to look at actually, which year we use this year and last year, and it's definitely not going to be a town, they can all share. I mean, it's just a police department, online, it goes to the group, and keeps them alert to them, so, I think it could be on whatever street you live on, to make the phone calls, so they're driving all the way back here to take the group. The rest of the equipment, you know, the crews that we have on a rotating basis, that was increased last year. We did build a little capital rotation. Capital committee has helped, helped me get back, apart with that, cruisers back in 2016 were about $38,000, fully equipped. Now I can't touch one from the $60,000, so in nine years, again, I don't know any budget for that, we, we try to average 2% to 3% a year increases than what it used to be. It's obviously a book.
Any year everybody's coming from Mexico or Canada?
I hope not, I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be hard to check in for that.
We're most of us. Like LEDs, lights.
And you're looking to purchase versus lease in '26 with that $9,000?
Yeah, purchase, so the next two years, I would have to do purchases to save leases. Looking at $45,000, and pay in interest, I can avoid that, you can use that $45,000 somewhere else, I prefer to do that. And by the time we get FY28, I mean, already prices keep increasing, but we back up police rates anyways to move forward, so it should, this should be in on a five-year plan. Last increase is 64,200, we did that back about 2014, and it's about 10 years, so hopefully this will tend to exit. As the doctor said, he just left that, we're here dealing with it. So I think that's a police question, do you have any questions? Anybody has a question on police at all? Expenses, places, when the contracts come up, I think we did adjustment two years ago, these contracts get to the point where now, sustain, sustain work. We need an adjustment now, pretty much. Right, at least. Days are just, all the best, I mean, abuse. Thank you. Civil defense, that's the next one. That's level for the original stuff, the wage adjustments are the addition we can see there. For a period of nine years, myself as the emergency management director, and deputy director. Mark, you know, we, we can have salary, we can have site or anything for it, we just did it, every year we could ask for something, bust it. Negotiate segments into our actual duties that are, duties that we have, and we've established departments, so someday when I leave, Mark is no longer doing it. Now the salaries that they have to actually pay someone, multiple people. We created a department, that used to be one person, you know, myself, Mark, and a few other volunteers that are working on this. For the, for emergency management, we have meetings, quarterly meetings, Mark and I go to all the regional meetings. Again, we always thought it's important to have plans to go into the happens, that's really, so what we do on a regular basis.
And this is flat, this is another example, because we addressed it in the STM, I think.
Yes.
So that 25 is the same as last year with the adjusted budget.
It's a flat site, and there's no color adjustments on that, that'll be a flat site, but we'll see that in the adjustments. And animal control is level this year, most regional, most recent regional opinion on that. They were able to have some efficiency savings there, so our animal control isn't going up, a lot of a regional group here of six towns, so we wouldn't be able to afford to have any at that price we have. Animal control, two assistance vehicles, places to store the animals. Animal control, two assistance vehicles, uh you places to store the animals. Only time to go to the areas, so that's a great example of regionalization that we'll give money.
That domestic animals or any animal?
It's mostly domestic, so it used to be where they would pick up. That's something that they don't anymore, um if this. You know, like an eagle or something that started, they'll, they'll call up appropriate people and they'll help, help with it. You have an inspector too, who's supposed to be, be up issue. And that's second.
Their budgets much less, that's why.
Yes. We don't seem to have a lot of that, most of. You know, the animals would be able to be years. So I could deal with them, we had put it down.
Right.
Which I need to deal with through work, you know, it's just not. We're not even sharing anything. Yeah. Dispatch. Um that's level two, so we're back to one twenty, the next three years of vision dispatch service, so. Again, that's where I wanted everybody, five years ago, we won't read zero or eventually. Been after three years and last assessment, Jeremy, that we're here this morning. Is it two thirty, two twenty seven, two twenty seven, so two twenty seven, so we need that, just keep that in the back, or it's three years from now that. That number's gonna jump, two twenty seven.
And we'll jump to one fifty nine, one twenty. And there, there you back down.
Yeah, that's, we got additions on contracts for. Some of the fiber we have, the camera systems we have, the main is from the camera systems, the box systems. Um and then replacement of, of things as they age out. Fortunately, the care does not last forever, our systems need, we work every now and then, and that's also our phone system that's tied to the neck, that records everything, so. That's why there's some built in expenses for dispatch, but we saved, ends up saving two million dollars for ten years, so. But it was a bit.
Two what? As I say, in general, when you, when you're replacing units as they age out, does the infrastructure remain the same and it's just the end units?
As, as right now, it has been, uh looking to change in this investment in home service for us, so we're gonna be doing some upgrades there. Some infrastructure will change, our phone, actual phones will stay, because we replaced those last years, local changed. Um that's some of the inside infrastructure that, that runs the tall calls, it will be worth.
Oh, I think, so you said one twenty for three years. FY twenty six will be our year two, at one twenty, could we pay it last year, is that right? There we go, so twenty is, we're gonna see that.
We're capped at twenty, um. So, so we're capped at one twenty, so our year four, I think, was supposed to be more than one twenty, so I think we might be year five now, at six seventy. We switched over in August of twenty two. We moved to the station.
So six, seven.
So August twenty two, three.
We have three more after twenty.
And then what happens? What happens the next year after?
Hundred percent assessment.
So the, so right now, the hundred percent assessment is two twenty seven, so when we're talking at the end of this period and the budget was up, that budget goes up between now and then.
Yeah. So we're gonna continue to see then reflective rising expenses from this, because that's life. Just wanna make sure we're checking in.
Complex calculations, so.
Yeah, yeah, but it's gonna be going up.
So, yes, we're.
We can't expect it to say two some twenty seven forever, right?
Right, right.
So the, the formula is based fifty percent on your population, uh fifty percent on your. Volume, from the last available, that is, reflecting actual use of service and then reflecting kind of risk, right, performing, you know. So our proportionate share went down a sliver from fiscal year twenty five to fiscal year twenty six, just because other places grew faster and other places. Um used to, cause volume more, had more volume, uh but that's, you know, not necessarily what future capacity is also.
Our subsidies run out. There's three more after twenty six.
A formula system, and we, towns are growing fast enough, so we could see a drop in, you know, share, so. You know, looking to twenty seven, may not, we see a way with that, so, right? The framework is obviously growing a lot faster, so their shares are going up.
We're having discussions right now too on how to do the, you know, not just key out the decennial census, but have like um either. Town census, American community survey, something to reset the population, because from FY twenty five to FY twenty six, Rhythm grew like twenty thousand people, or twenty percent. That was in twelve, I think, like twenty, yeah, twenty percent, because we went from using the twenty ten census to twenty.
So usually, right, yeah, so when, if we had done it by any way or something, we would.
That one fits too, because where I'm from, so every year.
Um I know also that there's some merger talk um with the MC, um would you expect that?
Sure. Yeah, so, yeah, so we have a airborne meeting today, um we got a presentation, uh a lot of. Whereas similarly minded, but the details aren't important, so um the director, interim executive director and. Negotiating team are putting together a formalized update for us to be able to share with all of our boards and formally, um so it's less of a, so that's one message come out of work. Um but the media public, so uh it was, uh you know, a lot of questions on funding formula, that's the video, um semrec is. Equal here, so each town pays one quarter. Um and then we pay on supporting, I think, um and if you combine our budgets and look at what we pay, we're, you know. Keep your proportion of what the total is, um kind of the three models they're looking at. Um and our concern with, you know, the kind of future proofing the, the formula, let's look at that in the towns, how does that work under any of these? So a lot of details to be worked out, um but I think the um generally positive. Backside.
People share the, have contingents for us.
We would go from our two twenty seven to four eighty eight.
Yeah.
Sheesh.
There's a clause in that, I don't.
But the hundred thousand dollar increase, I mean, that's. About five percent of your budget, right, so that's.
We're, we're at this kind of rate right now, so that's what we should, so.
Well, but we're not.
No, but it's like, how many communities, second.
Yeah. Bridge is how many total? I just think the idea of a five year forecast on our budget becomes maybe an FY twenty six goal, because we've got all these things where.
Yeah.
We talk about incrementally adding headcount, but we're also talking about. Expected costs we need to plan for.
Yes, yeah, that's what it feels like, and I'd like to worry about it now.
And do, to give you an idea, what. The benefits, we're right for, so even if we actually finish twenty seven, or four eighty in two thousand. So anywhere with inflation at four eighty, probably fifty, five, sixty to six hundred right now. So it's still significantly safer, because it seems like it's gonna rot, it's still.
I know, it's just that your perception, your fiscal responsibility has created a perception. That we have to get over.
And also you have to plan for our step.
Yeah.
And, and the projections, that we said we saved two million, that was based on two thousand twenty one, so it's not too, so it's very concerned, so let's, let's add two million. Two, two very one.
You know, taxpayers don't wanna hear what they didn't spend, that's the problem, so.
Because we did send this.
Right, right.
I mean, is there a search where we slowly start to, if we generate a fund, maybe start to slow the, to then sort of draw from to then burn down so that it's a massive jump?
So, um, we'll talk about that when the schools come, but it's a similar approach, but yeah, you can do a special purpose stabilization. Put a higher number, or we put a minus as, you know, reserve for transfer, but within the, um, within prop two and a half, within our levy.
Yeah.
Um if you immediately transfer that to a special purpose stabilization, um and then, I think you said, keep that there and then add, when we get to that. Funding cliff, uh we can slowly climb in.
And there are, there are, there are budgeting tools you don't ever use that we need to start thinking about using.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we were at zero, I'm going to zero, I had asked the permanent administrator, some of the board members that. Why don't you start a capital, now this is something that you have needs, for the next seven years with this money, don't allocate to the budget, but at that time. Needed a budget, you know, so basically to show up all the needed amount. But I mean, I, I thought when something like this happens, plugging into something, Jeremy said you don't need like that, we had tons of capital needs at the time. Not taking off capital and doing a dent of it, now what is that, this? Kind of like your own spending, like did, you don't go on your side, you start using it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just like, it's the one you use. Think that's all my. Pretty easy, but I say it like it's pretty. Over and everything, and you just ask, it's. I know you put it on fire time, so. To be fair, that, that also does help me to go back and just, this is all great and it's dripping from the fire hose.
Yeah.
Stuff like this does help me, but I think, once all departments do it once, right, that's gonna be the biggest burden. And then updates and deltas, like all of the basics, just describing everything, like it just helps me go back, no, absolutely, yeah, after, yeah, I'm doing the pass, yeah. Yeah, I think so. And then it shows every year, that's personal stuff. Yeah. Copy please. So many, let's never get any questions.
Any questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
You guys can get ready by ten thirty.
Working on it.
So before we move on, okay, the non budget stuff, I just want, I want to talk about the one budget thing in here that uh. It's also really a net positive for the budget, but it's a mistake I made earlier, um it ends up with us more revenue, but I, I have the wrong, I have the wrong number in here. So um that made me go back and check everything above it, so everything above it, uh. This debt is number I had in here at seven forty four, five four nine, and I was hard keyed, so as I was going through this, it was. Concerning to me that I have hard keyed number, we can come over here to the budget document, our actual outside the levy debt, sorry.
Hmm, I'm getting cursed at.
Yeah, close errors. All right, our actual outside the levy debt is not seven hundred and forty four, it's seven, or it's eight hundred and seventy four. So we are carrying, in the projection that I had to you, we are carrying the full weight of the expense of excluded debt and not giving us. I was not giving us credit for the full weight of the revenue of the excluded expense. So what that means.
Five hundred K?
But that, yeah, what that means is that this. This should equal.
Thought you would have had that memorized.
Plus. So that's eight seventy four instead of seven forty four, so the seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so just over one million, it's not just hundred and a half thousand dollars, because I keyed it incorrectly. Like I said, if that came in across the confidence, so I went back and checked the fiscal twenty five, let me.
This is not the first time you've sold.
Yes.
Sold as.
Why, why are you bringing that up, Mike?
Is perception wise, just a huge benefit.
So, sure, then, so this is DL, this is DLS, their fiscal year twenty six for budget finance purposes, so. Nineteen eight seven two and four nine six, or two and a half, so nineteen eight seven two, so then the other pieces of, this is an estimate. That actually isn't hard keyed, and that is hard keyed, but it's also, so, um anyway, bad news that I did it wrong, good news that I did it wrong.
Thanks for catching your air.
So I guess uh this finance committee have any other business?
Uh Mark, wasn't the next item on the agenda to discuss the town work, you were going to see.
Yes, yes, okay, so uh, yes, so why don't we um. Sorry, not immediately after, but let's skip ahead to item. Actually, we can probably skip past. Item six are very close, so citizen statements and petitions, I think we have anyone here. And item six is uh some minutes have been distributed for review, so we don't need to go on this, so then that brings us right to seven, uh the annual town meeting draft, so thank you for, for reminding.
So here's our draft, there's um some format, so. This tripped up KDR for a week or so on special town meeting, so we went to go, you know, update previous warrants, we're not gonna. Revent everything, uh and so all these boxes you see here were white, so you couldn't see them, and when we're trying to move stuff, we're trying to. Nightmare, uh not realizing that, so all these, all these boxes that you see here, all these tables, those will be gone and stuff, but for us actually putting it together, this has saved hours. So here's where we are now, um this is, um so first, obviously, the uh, the traditional one about um being out of word about funding source. Fixing compensation salaries. Raise and appropriate for bills of a prior year, um. We had a transposition of an amount for a bill of a prior year and we, so we short paid a bill by like. A small amount, um so we actually have a fiscal twenty four bill of a prior year that we had on the special town meeting more, but had a number of transpositions, so the accounts will most pay. Right, so.
Um so, okay, so it's, it's the whole bill, not just the difference, uh or.
I believe it will just be the difference, we didn't pay the whole bill, accounts will less, so.
Okay.
Is it under a dollar, so it'll be a good thing to talk about in town meeting?
Talk about it more now. Uh so we raise and appropriate um expenses in the town, the budget. Um chapter ninety, so we recently got um reviews on chapter ninety about our um appropriation. Four hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars. Raise and appropriate transfer video sources for the assessors cyclical and the optimization account, so these were two questions I had on whether the town has historically. And what the town wants to do going forward, use free cash to fund these or put these with inside, inside of the levy and raise, raise it in fiscal twenty six. Uh it's twenty nine thousand dollars in total, and right now I'm carrying it, that's raising the levy. I can't tell from the way warrant articles are written on how it's been done in the past. I can check, that's free cash and movie assessors, but should you want to fund with free cash instead and have that be the motion, um then um, then we can put thirty thousand dollars.
We, we would always raise it in the levy, because we didn't always have the free cash to pay it. What's that? So that's my recollection of all of that. I, I just think we need to assess for this current year, what the best method is based on the needs that we have.
Right, yeah, correct.
And when we do the. Mind of this is because we have, we have like, they expense every five years, so we budget for it a fifth sort of thing, um so it is. Regular and recurring, in my opinion, and should fall under the levy rather than free cash, yeah.
Okay, is it, it's three years, not five, right?
We have to do like a full tape, I, I don't know, I, I don't want.
I thought it was, my, my recollection is, it was a three year cycle, we do a third of the town every year, so.
Um then, yeah, and then, then it's a two year, what, I, I don't know off the top of my head, so I'm gonna ask you.
Is the fact that it says FY twenty four just because it's a copy paste of the previous?
Sorry. And then the same thing with the police grant one, um I'm not carrying that in the levy right now, because I just spoke with the police chief recently about what that was. Wasn't in his budget request, well, I didn't quite understand what that is, so similar to that nineteen thousand, twenty nine thousand, that will be added to the. To the levy, it's a three thousand dollar amount to allow the police department to access funds quickly for the sanction.
Match and grants, right?
So um. Same with the national opioid settlement program funds, um it's uh restricted uses, we, I'm sure to talk about it, I mean, before we're sure, since like putting it's on fund. Um this article ten, um is something that we voted at special town meeting, I believe, uh that needs to be voted every year. Um it was a suggestion from town council to allow select work to um accept a zero dollar.
So this will be moving into the annual town meeting to go forward.
Okay, so the regular.
So it is, because it is a fiscal year basis authorization, so maybe it's, I'd say four.
Yeah.
Free cash preparation funds now, should we need to, we can also raise that on the, on the levy. Free cash preparation funds now, should we need to, we can also raise that on the, on the levy. Um, or we can do it on existing transfers within the fiscal year, um. Which highlight will be here next week, we can discuss what kind of magnitude of that is. Um, these are the two debt exclusion questions we need to update the size while this is just. Uh, these are the two uh, debt exclusion questions.
Oh, yeah, so it, it lists select word, would that be school committee?
Putting this forward. Um, I'll look to see what a previous one was. Just very often.
Um, so I see, okay.
It's like what me.
Okay.
I just saw one later. It's not, it isn't.
These are ones with follow-up, uh, are both of them follow-up votes on the, on the ballot as well?
Yeah. Those are both the decks. Yeah. Uh. The uh. The language came from school committees council. Uh, of course, our council review as well. But the second one specifically, um, is really handed by.
Yeah.
So the question on. The operations of this. If it was in uh, the best interest of Menden because this board decided to. Uh, the best way to present it is to split that second one into, you know, fields and not fields.
Article twelve.
Yeah, article twelve, uh, no, article.
Yeah, article twelve, you'd think it's thirteen, but it's. It's not. Last words is more stuff.
So article twelve, so if it, if it was the perspective of the board that article twelve has to be split up. Because a select word article is in our interest to do so?
I don't think that's our.
Yeah, I don't either.
But if, if we put our name against it, isn't it our?
I don't think it's.
No, I don't think, I think the school has to put forward the warrant article. That's their ask. Frankly, I do agree.
I didn't, I didn't.
You try to split it?
I can make an argument, I have either way, that says that this should be a select for article because it's about a debt exclusion of us taking on debt, um. Kind of feels different than others.
I do, yeah, I, I have to turn this by capsule because we're talking about, um, they have to be like loud into the. Marine might be loud in town, he's like, can. I, I don't know if they have a, they still stand in to sponsor an entity, sponsor an article, um, and the debt that's being taken on really isn't. It's not, it's not our debt, we're paying for it, but it's.
Yes.
Borrowed by a separate thing.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I seem, seem to recall from previous experiences, because we have a regional school district agreement. Um, and we don't, we always would have to vote to allow these people coming to the meeting, you know, for the whole reason of the, of the vote. But because we have the clickers now, that doesn't become, that's. Not an issue for the, for the vote, so I believe. Um. I believe ju- just like every other elected official, every other elected department has the ability to put things on the warrant. I believe the school committee. Has the ability to put articles on the warrant. That pertained to, to them and the agreement there, the, the regional agreement that they have with the two towns.
Can you remember the last time this?
It's like five years ago, we got, six years ago, five years ago. Feels like five years ago, four years ago. But this count. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we did have a recent override, so we should be able to find what was put on there.
We may sponsor, but they do all the time.
Yeah, 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 no, agreed, um.
And I think the, because they're taking the debt out, school committee actually votes to say how they want to pursue it, things can be changed on the floor.
Yeah.
And that's actually a placeholder, because I know that Upton has had some questions to them on how we're going to fund. So we should, I don't know if we made it yet, but there should be a placeholder to use our CPC funds to do a lot of field work, rather than take on debt.
Yeah.
So there's, 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 this is still in flux in my mind. We just know there'll be some warrant article there.
Some, some number.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, uh, I don't want to hash it all to death right now, I just want to know what conversations we should be having to figure out if there's something to. Do with this. Based on our perspectives or ownership or any.
And, and I do think that. Um. Separate from how we pay for it, whether we use CPC, I think our ships have to sail in the same direction. But that. You know, however, if, in other words, if Upton doesn't split it up. Then we probably can't split it up. You know, because if we're going to take on the debt. You know, it's either, it's either one article or two, and we should be on the same page about how to do it.
So I, I'm meeting Maureen, uh, Jay from the schools and Joe from Upton next week to talk about the hundred different ways that this can kind of go. Um, but the town meeting vote, uh, you know, the motion can be more specific. Uh, the, the motion includes a dollar value in ways that the um. Ballot question is not. So if it's a twenty-six million dollar authorization for article twelve. And someone says, I want, tell me the detail on the fields, take the nine point on the negative, you know, fifteen million, sixteen million. Um, then we would still have the ballot question vote, you know, then that would authorize the smaller, so even if Upton authorized the full amount. Um, the collective authorization would be for, for a smaller amount. I talked to council about this last week, um, and then presumably the schools would come back to us for the delta. What I'm trying to figure out is whether the town meeting vote can say, do everything as presented, except the fields, or if they can say, or if they're. Relegated to saying just a dollar amount, and then the schools get to move it to a dollar. Let's say we do want to be the field, so we're not going to do ten million dollars. That's like.
Who's bringing the motion?
Who's writing the notice?
Bringing it to the floor.
So I went to twenty twenty, sorry, I went to twenty twenty-one when there was the operation. See if the town would. Additional funding operation of, uh, and responsible by thing. So.
There you go.
That is, should.
Well, select word has changed how we do these things and they've all become select.
Yeah, and the reason, and it used to be select word articles, and then. It really comes down to the, at the time, the members of the select board didn't want to, they wanted the thing come to read them. Because they didn't want to, but, but my, my memory going way back is that. You know, it also is the elected members of the school committee.
So, but if, I mean, I think, I, I'd bring it back to the, sort of the. I think the question that Mike brought forward is, as a board. If we have an opinion, we want to formalize so that maybe Jeremy can take it to his meeting next week on how we should combine or split. Does, does this board want to have that discussion now so we can?
It's an interesting point, and.
Because I think it's.
I think this committee has also had a question, and you have, I don't know that you've had a chance to discuss it either.
We have not discussed it. Yeah, we have not discussed it as a committee by ourselves. I have individual conversations with most folks, and there seems to be a general alignment that splitting it up. Has some benefit of bringing it to town now.
I've heard that from a number of different sources as well as, I mean, as well as. Being of the opinion that people, whereas I, I understand that uh. The appeal of combining it, I feel like both, it, both the projects, the, you know, building infrastructure and the fields will do better. Individually than together, just because it gives people the feeling that they have the choice.
Yeah.
And sometimes people will vote no because they don't like.
Feel that they have, they have their voice.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would bluntly say that as a citizen, not a representative of the thing com, I may be preempted to just write up. A motion to amend the article, if that's what I feel is in my best, is in the best interest of. The town, right? Um. So people can be prepared to do that, and I think there, there may be a lot of people who share the same opinion despite the way the school.
And what I think we saw from that, uh. The multi-board meeting, the discussion was very much dominated by the fields and very little discussion actually was about. The infrastructure building needs of the school district, and I think. Both deserve, I, I, I feel like one advantage to separating them is to make sure that there is equal attention given to both.
Yeah, what, what I would hate to see is our kids not to continue with. What this is, so what this game is today.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of people who feel the luxury.
And there, there's, there are safe, right, there's, we know there are safety issues in the school as well, and. And I recognize that there are safety issues with the fields as well, but like. Having those issues separated, I think.
The, the CPC, the funding comes into play here, because if you separate the field, you can demonstrate that there's potentially. Less debt to the field, that we can do it through CPC funds, who we've already surcharged on. Which I'm not sure, the school committee at the time, they decided to go this route, had firm that thought process up.
That is a nail in the head.
But I have to bring it back, do we want to formally vote a, a. Give them our recommendation, just so they're, we're in, in the event, we're asked on the floor, what do you think about this? We can at least have an informed voted opinion to say. Our recommendation was to split or not split, whatever the vote would be, but at least give Jeremy something to bring back for their consideration.
So I mean, I, I'm in favor of splitting, I don't know, I, I know, I see some nods, I don't, I think, Jason, you have a.
I'm just being patient till you guys get to the end of it. I expressed my strong opinion at this multi-board meeting, so.
Would the state should be split?
I think it's not transparent to keep them combined, and, and I think. The, the fields, like economic, their argument was there was an economic value to both towns for the turf field, and. That's only true if you put a turf field in each town.
I want to put forward a motion. For the select board that we recommend to the school committee that we break. Their uh, article, well, article proposed, I see their proposal. To separate all the field workout from all the capital infrastructure within the buildings as two separate articles on our town meeting warrant. That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Make further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Post? Alright, so we have that in our committee.
That's the guy I am.
Is there value?
Sometimes.
Okay, I mean, this, you could say this is an outcome of the multi-board meeting. We learned, we heard, we're giving our thoughts.
As well, that they may not be hearing.
I mean, it's a fifty-fifty, I can see it both ways, I just lean towards transparency.
And I think that, that's the strong point, though, is, and also, even, even. I think it is transparent that they're. Putting them together to kind of force a result, and I think that could have the opposite effect.
Well, it could have, but I'd say from being in some of those discussions, what they're trying to avoid is hitting different. Priorities against each other, saying, we have capital needs for the school. Across the board, the only reason we're, we have two is because the state makes us up two. They would have preferred to have one single saying, here's our capital plan. It went from ninety million down to twenty million for five years, this is our ask, which I, you can see some. You know, transparency in that too, saying, okay.
Well, may I put a motion, the income then to bifurcate precisely the same fashion. Selecting is recommending. Yeah, Jeremy's benefit to take back from the school. I see.
Sick.
Alright, uh, so all those in favor of bifurcating article twelve, the same way the select board did, uh, all those in favor? We got into a roll call book because we have people online, so why don't we start online with Bron?
Uh, Ron, aye.
And so all of, but all those in favor?
Jack, aye.
Jesse, girl, aye.
Mike, crager, aye.
Billy, had ad, yes?
All those opposed? Uh, all those abstaining? Ron, you need to either, you need, you need to.
Can, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm so, I'm sorry, I, I said aye before, but you didn't hear me, um, Ron, Z, aye.
Aye for, oh, okay, so you, you approved, so well, two, you're in favor.
And Katie, I like the initial motion to include the bifurcation, which I think that's a great word.
I don't know how to spell the thing.
Alright, so we are unanimously, unanimously uh, supportive of bifurcating article twelve. Say it one more time, it's part of me.
I mean, I think one question may come up, and we don't necessarily have to vote now, is whether our boards will support these articles. Um, so I think we will need to just, I don't know that we want to do that now.
I think we can wait for the final thing.
Wait for it to be more about the, the numbers.
And just for anybody who watches this, these are non-binding votes, we're just expressing formal uh. Perspective from our boards to the school committee.
It's easier for the chair to represent the whole board if we vote. For Karen.
Yes.
Or Jerry.
Take, take our message back.
Um. Upton CPC is all, it's using CPA funds to make.
Did they have a dollar? Yeah. It would be good if we get, get the details from the capital plan, which pieces of it, because it's all been focused on turf. But really, the backfields, the softball fields, all the field fields.
Let's get back to it.
Yeah.
So they have a public hearing on April second. Upton CPC does. Which doesn't give. Really any time, that's too late to really change that. Valid questions for Upton.
Oh, really? Ah.
Yeah.
What's the levy?
When is there?
The week before ours, so our deadline to submit a valid question is um, April eighth. So that means theirs is April first.
Oh, is there an election, is that much earlier?
Yeah, one, yeah, so our election is May thirteenth, their election is May sixth. We have to submit a valid question thirty-five days.
Do you think we can get details from Jay and Moni at a meeting next week as to what in?
It's actually tomorrow night, that's why.
Yeah, what, what part of the capital? CPC allow? Or do they need our help to understand, and if so, give us the details so we. They will get.
Yeah. Because that could be significant.
It could, a- and it's in line with our stated objection.
And, and, and we didn't take a vote last night, but our CPC is there, but. Yeah. And in details, which I couldn't get.
So will there be another CPA meeting or CPC meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, they asked it a placeholder to be out there.
Yep.
Cover it.
So, yeah, I mean, we should, everybody should prepare for the live debate.
Yes. Um, so these next two are the enterprise funds, um. Subscriber trash and water. So we'll put the fiscal year in some of these. Um. I haven't gone through the revolving funds and actually come up with whether these numbers did stay the same or not, but this is just in from last year to have the revolving fund thing here, so I'll have a suggestion on that. Um. If you recall, part of the municipal empowerment act, um, is that if these don't, we're sorry, now we have to vote these limits every year. And municipal empowerment act would say, if these limits, you only have to vote to change the limits, so if it's the same as last year, it doesn't have to go in. Which is very minor in the scheme of things, but it's one less thing. I, I say when we're talking about payroll, it's one, fewer times we touch something, the fewer times we have the opportunity to smash it out, so. Um. Uh. Placeholder, the, the town will amend the bylaws for uh, each restricted mixed-use overlay district. I got a draft from um, Dylan, currently assistant town planner, uh, about a flood hazard overlay district as well, so as we get more details on that. From him. It's coming from planning, um, and then placeholder for CPA funds for the athletic facilities. Um, so as that, we can also move these around, these numbers aren't, so we'll put it next to that.
And the, the other placeholder from CPA from last night would be. Partial funding of the uh, affordable housing coordinator position?
Oh, yes, so that was, that was great to come out of there, so I'll share with board what Mike had shared with me, um, so we talked about funding the. Planner, full one point O F T at sixty-three thousand or something and change. Um, and CPA has previously funded um, an affordable housing coordinator stipend. And part of bringing this role full-time was putting affordable housing coordinator in that job description, so CPA. Um, said a portion of that twenty thousand dollars, I think, seems.
So expensive, aren't you?
Um, so that would greatly offset the cost that's currently.
No, for the vote.
Proposing.
And Mike, Mike Mandalier was the gentleman that raised that last.
Very, anyways, great. Um, and I spoke with the uh, Millville T A today about um. You know, eight hours, point two of the F T E being there to, I said, we're carrying the full one point O F T E in our budget, so. If you're interested in these services or can afford it, can swing it, um, we can figure that out there, and that would end up defraying our cost, well, the cost would be the same, we just take in revenue. Um. Because the IMA was between us and Uxbridge, uh. He wanted to talk to Uxbridge as well and see if maybe they could do something together with them in a new third town, so. Um, he said, thank you, but, uh, didn't want to commit to anything right now before they sort of, but since that was new. And those are, that's, those are our placeholders.
I've seen short of this year, not bad.
Still, still.
Any other general bylaw changes?
So. Are there going to be general bylaw changes ready for any upcoming?
I think at least the town meeting one. Um, but they've been having, the meetings have been happening at the same time as our meetings, so it's, I've only been catching up on notes.
So the town, town meeting one?
The, so we changed part of the town meeting law.
Oh.
Uh, but not the other parts that would have matched the day.
I see, okay.
Uh, so that needs to be straightened out. Um, and there'll also be one, the wetlands bylaws.
I was wondering about that one, because I saw that there was that hearing coming up. Right. Are, so are we expecting the wetlands one to be?
I was expecting it to be here, but I, yeah.
Maybe. Okay.
Yeah, so they have until next week, so knowing these specific things are kind of in the ether, I'll specifically.
Yeah, just hold on.
So, yeah, what, what Jason was talking about would be election. We, we moved to the pegging to, like pegging it to a day.
Right.
And then section two said the annual town meeting for the election of town officers. Um, as required by law, shall be held on the Tuesday occurring eleven days after the first Friday.
Oh, okay.
It. We've moved when the town meeting can be, so conceivably, we would want to, um, allow the, uh. Town election to be within the first two weeks or within two weeks following annual town meeting, they're working on that, but they're relative to each other.
So anything more about the warrant draft?
Uh, it closes on the thirteenth, um, so I sent a reminder out to folks earlier this week to say, get me, donate the full, plus that details, just get me, get me placed.
So when will we next review it? Will we have, will there be an updated? Sunday, probably not.
Um, well, at least with, with these couple of things on it, um. We can re-review it in either the meetings Monday or Wednesday, if we get a new thing on that we can talk about.
So next. Right, so we have our, our budget meetings next Monday and Wednesday, and that closes on the Thursday. Okay. Alright.
Yeah, so maybe, so next Wednesday we'll do budget and any final town warrant view?
Yeah.
Assuming that.
Although there could be some things coming in that Thursday afterwards, so.
Uh, yeah, and, but the pink on piece will be on, you know, finance related things, so unless we have a citizen politician really related to it.
Yeah.
And, alright, we did talk about having, um. We've got our meeting on the eighteenth, right, that we talked about after we.
Just to generalize.
Right, so, so March eighteenth, we should have heard from. All the requests for putting in, uh, warrants on, or sorry, uh, articles on the warrant.
Anything else warrant related? I get a motion to close the pink on?
I still move, yeah.
All those in favor of closing pink on, Michael, you're aye?
Jack, aye.
Ron, aye.
Aye.
Can I say your name, brother?
Billy Hadad, aye.
Great. Pink comes closed down at four P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Jeremy, these warrant articles, and we might have some capital items. Coming up next week's meeting.
Yeah, so that was one I can do before that meeting.
Alright, so on to, uh, eight, which is some, um, license applications and renewals. Jeremy, can you?
Yeah, so, um, someone, uh, we have someone applying for a new, um, class two license. On the drive. Offered vehicles for sale. We have. And we have the application information, maybe on top of the article.
I think he's on the line, David. He didn't go out, he didn't get any of the insurance documents, because it wasn't approved.
So, so this was a, this was a new. Uh, there, it's been received by the department for payment, so there's been a new application, so the insurance requirements, uh, within. The application, because they have, this wasn't granted, they want to pay for insurance ahead of time, um, so they'll probably tend to. I mean, those insurance requirements, Katie will get them within, say, ninety days. And, uh, if insurance has not been, uh, procured to the standard of the license, um.
This is a class two automobile?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have any plans to see what their storefront's going to be like, or what their?
Okay, David, David, are you, are you on? So.
Yeah, I am here.
So the select board had a, a couple of questions on, on your class two application.
Okay.
Um, do we have any, uh, any either renderings or idea of what your storefront is going to look like from, from the public way?
From the, um, the location, uh, you actually do not see from the public way because of how the driveway is set up. Um, basically what I'm going to have there is an office area with a desk and two chairs to conduct the business. Along with parking for the vehicles. I'm looking mainly to, um, sell, uh, more commercial trucks and pickup trucks and such. Not so much, you know, regular everyday vehicles.
Can you, can you just explain, because I can't, since that goes, what, four? It says Four Morrison Drive on the.
Yeah, the Google map shows woods.
It's the building right before the fire.
I thought that was Linsada though, but I guess it's not.
No. No, Four Morrison is the driveway to the left before the, uh, fire department.
So some, all the operations though are set back away from the, the main thoroughfare?
Yes, yes, they are. Yeah. If you look, yeah, if you look right there, you see the white roof. Where I was going to operate is from over here where the black roof is. And right there, I was looking to, if you see the black roof right there? And then see the white, uh, that white roof right there and it has the, uh, pass through right there. Uh, is a trailer where I could use as my office right there, or I could also set up the office in the, uh, smaller building too.
Fire depression is down at the bottom of the screen.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. So when you come in, Morrison Drive, and then you take a left to go to the fire department?
Yes. Yeah, right, yeah, right with the mouses, that's how you get in there.
Yeah.
Is it where the school buses park now?
The school buses are across the street in that empty parking lot.
Other side.
Yeah.
Other side, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve the class two license application for distinctive rights operated pending receipt of oral or paper. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstained? Alright, thank you.
Good luck with your business.
Yep, good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much. And where will I get those requirements from that you are looking for?
Um, so in the license, there's insurance requirements, I think, I'm not sure if you've talked with Katie about those before, uh, we'll, we'll highlight them, um, so. So you understand what needs to get to us, um, to maintain the license.
Okay, yeah, I'm aware it needs a, a charity bond usually for a dealer's license. Okay. Alright. Thank you very much, I should contact Katie about the requirements?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have the amended driving range.
This is a new that they. They didn't get in, we didn't get, yeah, it's dated through four, so, um. Uh, this is, um, an entertainment license, um, for the driving range to me. Others lots of plans for that area, but they want to maintain their, their entertainment licenses.
And this one is usually seasonal, so he stopped in and he said that. The board usually accepts that it doesn't have a certificate of liability insurance because. Of it not being approved yet, and usually it's pending. Uh, he just stopped in and he told me what usually happened.
Yeah, so it'd be, like it says, range pending the roaming slip, right? And part of that would be the.
Okay.
Would be the license, the movie insurance.
So, anything, any more, uh. I guess we have information in the packet, any other questions on that?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five license for amended driving range pending riding slip completion. So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got it, completion.
Alright, so then we're on to the old salt box road update. Is there an update?
It's not being used radio.
There was nothing, so we talked last time about sending somebody out. Sending power label. In between, uh, or afterward, the court had said they, um, were. Um, found already and ready to be picked up, so, uh, seeing the power label there. Um, and as, uh, one thirty today. Paris has some documents for both cases, um, and I will leave all I can to the updated deed and signatures by the end. So.
Excellent, coming to an end.
Is that the last step?
Then actually getting it signed.
Okay, there's two steps left.
But they're all steps forward.
You are, you are in vote.
Oh, we did, we.
For me.
Okay.
Yeah, we can vote depending on the stuff getting.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great. So, alright, so then, uh, financial policy comments.
Yeah, um, so I've received some comments, I don't know that I have from everybody, but really I, I haven't been in financial policy too much, so. Just to be fun with me, that's even on here for everything.
Okay, and, uh. Levin, how administrative report?
Alright, got a lot. Um, they're, so tonight, um, Chief Demo is at, uh, Fire Academy graduation, so we, uh, recruit firefighter Ken McCann, who's graduating. Well, I'll be a volunteer to assist one fall by fighter. So it's exciting to kind of build much there. I had my D V T tour one year to talk about, um, but it was, it was really great, I spent three, three and a half hours, um, with the shooting team there.
Saw the pictures on Facebook.
That was, that was nice. It was, uh. A little bit tense first forty-five minutes as I was trying to figure out what the budget was about, um, and it ended up being a really, a really nice, um, morning and time there. Like I said before, I hadn't seen any of the stuff, um, so to see it actually was incredible. Um, to start, um, the calendar year, we moved to bi-weekly payroll and we're still on. About four different versions of paper time sheets. So last week we kicked off building our online time and tools, uh, with our payroll vendor. Uh, today we have kind of drilled down into what individual time sheets look like. And next week we'll get more polished product, figure out what our training, what our schedule is going to be to staff. A few areas of resistance from, from some staff, but we'll, this will, so we'll get there, input along the way, but this is. Um, as a concept. Just, I learned as part of this process, there's one department that would fill out their time, sort of department time, let's hand it to the department admin. Then fill out the time sheet, uniform manner. Fax or email over to, to payroll, I mean payroll would have to take that and import it directly into our, so.
Lots of room for, lots of room for humor.
We're not too. Hartford Avenue signal project or Plain Street, um, John W. A friend named John Davey, I won't say that. John Davey, Dan Meyer and I walked inside with one of the contractors. Yes, really?
Yeah, yes, we did. We know what you meant.
I wish you're there. A lot, lots of, and, um, originally they didn't have a date nailed down, we're talking about after school was out. Then we all, larger group got together, walked through the plans, and they would like to start in April. Uh, so, uh, I've messaged the group, um, kind of after that and saying, you know, give me a definitive date so we can get a communication plan about this and inform people, so. I'm not sending a date yet, but, um, it is possible or even likely that this project will start in April.
Coming up fast.
That's helpful for the paving, right? Because then we can get the paving done in the heart of the summer.
So, um, the plan right now is, um, to time everything, so we can kind of come through and reserve this. That as part of the, um. From wherever we start on Hartford Avenue down to the, um, Allenham. Uh, so as we get dates and finalizations and our contractors lined up, and that also helps us in that. Um, our bid for hot mix laid in place and milling, um, both expire on June thirtieth. So we're going through a procurement process right now, uh, already, we, we know the vendors, we know. To do it before June thirtieth, whereas if it was a later summer project, we don't have those bids yet. We met with Civic Plus about the meetings and agenda module and how that project's supposed to work. Um, really big improvement on the. On our system right now, where I missed putting two things on tonight's agenda, not anything time sensitive, but, um. They were on a list that did make this list and, uh, so. For our organizational purposes, um, I think, I think this Civic Plus, we're so much of a vendor, it's all integrated through there, will, will help quite a bit. Civic Plus is, it's got a lot of things, they're really good at, um, creating a schedule and expectations and helping me to it. Like I have a lot of the calendar invites on, I'm going to finish this by this, which is really helpful, so. We had our first team back meeting, we already scheduled all those things. We hosted a four fifty-seven B, the deferred compensation plan information session, kind of. Thus, there's several employees here, I'm talking about it, got a few folks signed up and worked part of it before. Um, so I'm still hopeful, um, that we can have that small, small incentive to, to get folks on.
So would that incentive be a one-time thing, an enrollment bonus?
Um, I had envisioned it as a yearly, you know, as of October first each year, you know, sort of something like that, as the budget allows, it's a really easy thing to. You know, if we have employees and it's five thousand, we don't, it's five thousand dollars. And gesture is one dollar. Right. Like I said, I was at the Mac today for our board meeting, um. Going to, yeah, went through the updates a little bit, but, um, it seems that any sort of CEMRE merger. Would be two to three years out is kind of the, kind of the position, um, and then they. Can operationally merge some fire stuff earlier, um, versus merging basically a little bit more difficult and then getting actually the same physical face would take another two to three years after that. Um, but it's been a process that's been underway for, for a little while, so once you kind of hammer out the official statement. Be more detailed. In addition, just things like the four fifty-seven thing and the hands-on CPR training, H, uh, HR's been trying to, um, get some engagement with folks. We're doing a lunch and learn, uh, next week, um, about administering the R T A. The public health leaders from Blackstone Valley Health Partnership come in and talk about that, kind of all the principles. Town council got back to me with policy, sectoral policy procedure comments, I think the, the last duty, something like that, so.
Lot of red?
Uh, no, not that so bad, um, so I'm going to go through those and highlight them and bring them here, um. Said, you know, we're going to vote it based upon town council report, yeah, so if there's anything substantive, you know, we can vote it again, it's. It's nothing.
Yes, like to know if anything's blatantly illegal, but.
I usually, I, I don't think.
Alright. All right.
Good to know.
After getting a nineteen point nine percent insurance premium increase, I talked to the independent insurance agents this week too. Except for twenty twenty-six, but what, what's it like going forward? So we're doing a lot of data gathering to be able to, to get to these. Those, what's difficult is because we're a community with under hundred employees or fifty-five employees or something. We can't actually, we don't actually have a lot of names data because it would be too easy to.
Person without that.
Yes. I don't have control. So we're working on that data gathering, but to tell my, hey, if you listen to us, if you go somewhere else, I. And then the last thing, I'm almost through the first round of edits on the annual town report. So we have, we have most things from most everybody's submissions. So we get that back to Katie so we can go back to the department heads. It's not my report, it's their department heads' report, but so I want to say if I make this change, like are you, are you okay with it? A lot of it has to do with continuity. Like I want an Oxford common whole thing. I want like no periods of any bullet points. I want single spaces after sentences, not double spaces after sentences, that kind of stuff. And then there's some that were just clearly written by multiple people within the department. It says the same thing like three or four times. So I, I was not making any subsequent edits, but I like that it was more like a police. That's all.
Oh, so on the annual report, so when, when would a letter from the select board need to be?
I think we're late.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
When is the printing?
Yeah. So we want to get it out in advance and tell me send out like people first moving the letter.
Play it time.
And then we, right, we talked about some things.
I just have a question. Is the dedication usually the board? That it keep, is always the dedication in the book?
Uh, I mean, it's, I think like a letter.
In, in previous years, we dedic, we've dedicated the book to employees or elected officials who've passed.
Okay.
Like I think, like, I think David.
Okay.
You know, and normally, normally I would, I would always depend on the town clerk who keeps track of all those records.
Okay.
Who would tell me, don't forget.
All right. So Katie, maybe, maybe we can check with the town clerk and see if there's anyone else that we should. Okay. Non-ligious. Anything? Yes. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah.
So that was it for county minutes right on the board. Okay. So we have it on here. I guess, right, future agenda items. We'll revisit that question of the affordable housing committee creation. Just going to be revisiting a number of committees in, in the future. So, and I know Brendan, you, you've gotten some information. So we'll talk about that another, another night. Unless you, unless you have a.
No, I don't have. Don't pass it along.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we have budget meetings coming up. Our next one is Monday, March tenth, budget meeting, another budget meeting Wednesday, month twelfth. And so I understand that, that Mike, Emily, Jason, you'll be attending remotely on Monday.
On Monday.
The tenth, and then not, you're not able to attend on the.
No, I'll be flying at once.
And so Monday, on the tenth is library, order assessors, water, parks. So we'll fold in the facilities, grounds, meetings, discussion, parks, bleeding.
On Monday.
And then Wednesday, it's conservation, council on aging, schools, and then anything else you haven't talked about that will kind of help me get to. What you want to see on the page.
So schools being anywhere SD and then Norfolk Aggie, will that also come up then?
Yeah, it will cover there. Chair will do sure.
Got to miss one meeting.
Yes. And so, but I guess that means that the, the three of us, we're four, so nobody gets sick.
Is the eighteenth replacing the nineteenth, the future meeting? Do we still hold the nineteenth?
We talked, I thought about doing both. So the eighteenth's just being like a budget wrap-up. So a chance to get the final, final recommendations from you and for the potentially debate. But I guess, I don't know what, what, I suppose we could, for now, maybe we'll keep March nineteenth on here as the regular meeting. But like, I don't know. Do you know how much is in the pipeline for the regular meetings on ten?
No, I'm, I'm, so it's a big honest to put on tonight.
You know, there was the, the election Ellen had.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that, that one spur? Okay.
And we have a public hearing. We know.
When is the public hearing?
I haven't completely scheduled it yet because we, I wasn't sure when the meetings were going to be because of budget. So I can schedule it around when we're gonna.
That still has to be up for eighteen.
Yes.
So.
That's the nineteen.
Okay. So not.
Yeah, we can have two years to add.
Oh, because it's not two weeks, right? Right. Okay.
I let them know it's probably going to be in April.
Okay. So probably the first, first Wednesday of April.
It's going to be a nineteen. It's a little sense.
Okay. So I mean, I guess there is, there's some question about whether we need to have the, the Wednesday, March nineteenth regular meeting?
Yeah. So I mean, all prepared as if we are and if we don't have a big bunch, a big agenda.
Right.
With the.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Makes sense.
And then.
But I, I, this wasn't the biggest agenda, but I thought we ended at reasonable time for the.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, pleasantly surprised.
Have, have we picked the date yet or until they have the budget hearing?
So.
FinCom does that, I mean. Well. We do. Well. It, it needs to, it needs to happen.
Right. So maybe we can now ask them about that on Monday.
Let me find out about the days we need to be ahead of.
Well, that's, that's, I guess that's really the question I should have asked is.
As I would don't shrink.
Right.
So anything, anything else? So I guess I accept a motion to be through.
I should do a journey. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not staying on it. All right. Meeting adjourned. Under three hours. Oh, but you didn't have, if I may.
I'm waiting for it.